Okay, we're gonna call to order the committee of the home meeting for Tuesday, November 28th.
Yes.
It is 7:30 PM. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Rosado?
Here.
Atack?
Here.
Stark?
Chanzick?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Salvani?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley? Euer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
Okay, so we do have 12 out of the 14 aldermen present, so we do have a warm. Next item is item number two, which is approval of the minutes for September 19th and 24th, October 3rd and 24th, and November 7th of 2017. Does anybody have any comments or questions about those minutes? If not, can I get a motion to recommend the city council approval?
I'll move.
Second?
Motion by Chanzick, second by...
Meitzler.
Meitzler? I'm sorry.
Got your wrong glasses, Doc.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Item three, items removed, added or changed. The only thing I know of is Peggy wanted to move item number seven. We wanted to switch item number seven and item number eight. Just made more sense to put item eight right after item six.
Mm-hmm.
Does anybody have anything else? Laura, do you have anything else?
No, I don't.
Okay. Item four is matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. So if anybody has anything for us that is not on the agenda, please come up to the podium. Give us your name, please, if you could.
My name is Bob McQuillan. I'm a resident of Batavia. Good evening, Mayor, and Mayor Proton, and the city council members. I was actually looking for some clarification on this topic of public comment. Over the last couple of meetings, there's been some confusion as to when the public is allowed to comment. And, right now, you know, you say here, "Matters from the public for items not on the agenda." So... But in a guide to public meetings in the city of Batavia that is on your website, I'd like you to read a short, actually half-paragraph. It says, "Matters from the public for items not on the agenda provides the public with an opportunity to address the council or Cal on any item that does not appear on the agenda. There is an opportunity for the public to comment upon agenda items when those items are being addressed at the meeting. The presiding officer will ask if anyone desires to speak. At this time, you may step up to the microphone." It's my understanding that that's not actually happening, at least in the last 10 meetings that I have attended. It has not been asked after each agenda item if there are any comments from the public. And according to your own outline, after each agenda item is discussed among yourselves, or maybe even before, but I would think it would be after you discuss it, the public should be permitted to come up and make a comment on that particular agenda item. And so, I just wanted some clarification on actually how the public comment should work and how it is working right now with the council and both the Cal.
I can give you my two cents on that. Typically, what I do is, just as I just did tonight, ask if there was any comments from anybody from the public that's on an item that's not on the agenda. And then I would say, which I regrettably did not say, if you have an item or if you have a comment on something that is on the agenda, that I would ask you to try to get my attention during that time that it's on the agenda or that we're having that discussion, and I would make sure to call on you for your comments. I regrettably, like I said, didn't do that tonight. I've been a little bit under the weather, so even in the last...
So am I, so we have the same thing, I'd say.
Last council meeting, I wasn't quite thinking clearly sometimes. But that would be what I would typically do at the committee meetings, ask that you just try to get my attention. And it kind of depends a little bit on the item and what I think may be the most beneficial for the public as to when I would ask the public to make their comments. Because I feel as though quite often, if the public has the opportunity to hear what we have to say, we might answer their questions before they even have to ask the question.
Yep, I agree.
If it's something that I think would be more beneficial for the council or the petitioner, whoever might be here, to hear what the public's got to say, I might ask that if the public has got something to bring it up ahead of time. So I would always make sure that the public does have their time to make their comments and address the committee, but that's the way I would do it at the committee meeting. And I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. And is that also gonna be the procedure for the city council meeting?
I can't answer that, Mayor.
It definitely is. I'm hard-pressed to remember anybody that's saying that they didn't get a chance to talk to a city council meeting in the last few years.
Yeah.
Well, generally, what it's done is in the public comment section. It's not asked after each agenda item if there is some comment from the public. And maybe that could be the clarification, is after each agenda item, the person running the meeting can ask, "Is there any comment from the public?" And then the entire public would know, "That's the time that I should talk." Because I'm assuming, actually, I thought the crowd would be a lot more, but I'm assuming the hot item tonight is gonna be the One Washington Place item. So, I'm, again, assuming from your explanation that the public could speak during that agenda item.
Correct.
Okay.
I appreciate your comment.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And since it was brought up, if somebody does want to address us on something that is on the agenda, to get my attention during the time of that item, and I'll make sure that I call on you.
If anybody else has anything for us that's not on the agenda?
Yeah, Yvonne Dinwiddie, 1156 Pine Street, here in Batavia. And I know One Washington is on the agenda, but TIF districts are not. And I wanted to bring up TIF districts again because I am going to be working with the state to do away with TIF districts or completely rewrite them. And we need to have a complete dissolution of most TIFs because nobody, nobody is working to see that these TIFs perform as they are supposed to. Here is a whole folder. This whole folder is nothing but TIFs that have been established and proposed to be established within the last year. And they're proposed by not only Show Dean, who has quite a few of them out, but a number of other companies along the area. And they're raping the taxpayer. They're demanding money that should be going to fix our streets and to fix our sewers and all the other things that need to be done, but this TIF money is taking away from our city finances. And I don't care how you work it out, I can bring back all the pages from the original TIF here in Batavia, and I can prove to you that that TIF has not made money. And if it had made money, and if it had done what it was supposed to do, you wouldn't have to be putting more TIFs in Batavia. Batavia's not gonna be a town without a TIF pretty soon. Almost every place in Batavia's in a TIF district. Pretty soon, my area might be in a TIF district, except we don't have any business over there. So, you know, personal property is not put in a TIF district. And I urge all of you to stop with the TIFs. It's the rape of the taxpayer. It's not a good thing. And here is another one here that was just renewed. If it was working, it wouldn't have to be renewed. If these businesses cannot stand on their own two feet, we don't need to be propping them up with our tax dollars. And that's all the TIFs are doing, is propping them up with our tax dollars. It's raping the taxpayer and the people, and it has to stop. And I will do my damnedest to ensure that it does.
Thank you. Carl?
Carl Dinwiddie, 1156 Pine Street. Two points. Number one, you're at least, I think, the only government body in Batavia, maybe in a wide range, that lets the public speak after the agenda items. I know I've been very frustrated at school board meetings, 'cause I know there's something coming up, and I might make a few comments, but then there's this great big discussion, and I got nine different things that I would like to say about it, but your public comment time is over. So I do have to compliment the council for having that procedure. On TIFs, I went to the, I think it was the annual TIF review board, and so the public wouldn't know about my comments, and I also emailed some things to the council. But a couple of things I said, and piggybacking on what Yvonne said, California was the originator of TIFs, and they have now done away with them. Iowa's doing away with TIFs. The city of Chicago inspector general wrote a report, which I forward to all of you, which I don't know if there's 12, 20 pages, whatever. The inspector general said, "TIFs have cost the taxpayers in Chicago close to $500 billion." And as you know, the property taxes for poor Chicago residents are going up over $1,000 each. They tried to do the soda tax, 'cause they didn't have enough revenue, but I think that's a pretty good, knowledgeable source that the inspector general says the city of Chicago has, it's cost them $500 million. And of course CPS is complaining all the time, they don't have enough money. Well, a lot of it is just being washed out to developers and TIFs. Their number is $500 million, and it's in writing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, we're gonna move on then to the next item, which is item five, Resolution 17-132-R, authorizing the purchase of a cardiac monitor for the fire department. Alderman Wolf, do you have that?
Thank you, Dave. This would be part of the 2017 capital budget for the fire department. They're gonna be replacing a cardiac monitor that I believe is 13 years old, no longer produced, and has limited capabilities and serviceability. There really are only two cardiac monitor manufacturers and models for the EMS service. If anybody has any questions, chiefs up here, you can answer that. Any questions?
Both of the prices came off of a group purchasing contracts, so the... So, at the council meeting, we'll have to waive formal bidding then, since it came off of a group purchasing contract. Other than that, they're real close in price, kind of a thing, and they really are the only two manufacturers. It just so happens that the manufacturer that we have for our current cardiac monitor is a different one, but they're getting out of the business of providing cardiac monitors for EMS personnel. So, these are about the only two that are left out there.
I have one question. Do we have any other ones in other equipment, or is this the only one that we have?
We have one on each frontline engine, and then the ambulances have it, but those are through Tri-City Ambulance.
Right, those are through Tri-City Ambulance. But our own stuff is just in one engine in each side of town?
That's correct.
Each has one? Will they be the same units, then?
Yeah. Right now, you're, I'm requesting the purchase of one, but I got the, they're gonna hold the quote for me, and then as soon as the next budget is approved, then I'll get the second one for the second engine, so they'll be identical.
Okay. That was one of my things, was if they're gonna be the same, then there won't be a learning curve one way or the other for...
Nope. You'll see the same memo in about a month and a half.
No questions? Somebody like, care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Meitzler, second by Callahan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so that has to go on the regular agenda?
Regular agenda, 'cause we'll have to waive formal bidding on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item six, Ordinance 17-66 to 2017 Tax Levy Estimate. Alderman, Atack?
Thank you. Per the direction of city council at the November 14th meeting, the tax levy ordinance was prepared with, has been prepared with a $600,000 increase to corporate levy to be designated for an additional $300,000 for stormwater capital infrastructure, $200,000 for hiring a building inspector and police officer, and the remaining $100,000 will go to the street capital fund. A notice of the public hearing was published in the Daily Herald on November 22nd, 2017, notifying the public that a hearing will be held on December 4th, 2017. The levy is slated to be approved December 18th, 2017. The total estimate for the levy without debt service for the bridge is $7,113,811.51. The total levy estimate for all property taxes is $7,260,036.51. The projected rate for the 2017 levy is .7409.6 cents. Are there any questions? Well, comments? Do you have any comments, Peggy?
No, just that I have also added number seven, the resolution designating the portion of the increase in the tax levy to go to the street capital fund.
Okay, good.
Lucy, I just wanna make one comment for the public's benefit, that this is something that we did discuss at the last two budget meetings, and discussed it thoroughly, and battered it back and forth as to whether or not we felt as though we were justified in doing this. That's why it's here in front of us tonight.
Right. And the rate, from what we know, we really don't know what this, other cities are doing, but right now, we may be still the lowest in the surrounding areas. Is that correct, Peggy?
That's correct. It's possible that Geneva may be a little bit less than us next year.
So, we could be second to the lowest.
Right.
We just don't...
But we would still be very low.
Would someone like to make a motion? Well, is there a motion here? Right, okay, got it. Let me go back to, hold on a second.
Right, there is an ordinance that has been prepared, but it's not ready for motion until we have the public hearing. This was just to inform the council of the total estimate.
Okay. So, thank you. Any, no other further comments?
So then we go on to the next item, which is item number eight, Resolution 17-127-R. It's a resolution pledging the use of property tax for street capital fund. Alderman, Atack?
Yes. Okay, so as we said, that we are putting $100,000 towards the property tax, towards the street, for street use, and this resolution is saying that it will be put directly in that fund. Are there any comments or questions?
Again, for the public benefit, this was also discussed at the last two budget meetings, and recommendation by the committee at that time was to go through with this.
Because our streets need this and a lot more. So this is, you know, we're taking the steps we can at this time to work on improving the streets. Would someone like to make a motion to approve Resolution 17-127-R pledging $100,000 for the use of property tax?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, we probably oughta leave that on the regular agenda.
Okay.
And also, I would like to point out, since you did say $100,000, it is $100,000 this year, but I purposely left off the dollar amount in case you decided to increase it in a future year. You could always add to it. You designated $100,000 through the minutes of the meeting to be pledged.
So I should've left that off of the motion?
The actual resolution doesn't say $100,000, but I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. The next, the next ordinance is Ordinance 17-65, increasing municipal retail motor fuel tax. And we talked about this quite a bit at the last committee of the home meeting on November 14. And this ordinance increases the municipal retail fuel tax to four cents, from three cents to four cents a gallon. Are there any comments or questions?
You know, I'm gonna make a comment. I mean, I didn't support this increase, because I thought we should've gone a little higher. I mean, as you just said, our streets need it. Maintenance of our streets, we're falling behind. I mean, it's all there is to it, we're falling behind, and we're trying to get on a schedule. We're not behind, but we're not too successful. Last week, price of gas was about $2.87. This week, it's about $2.17. Nobody going into the gas station last week did not buy gas because it was too high. Okay? I mean, we, for a penny more, I mean, fill up, everyone fills up, say, once a week, 20 gallons, that's 20 cents. I mean, we're not killing people. Some people were concerned that we were gonna be the highest taxed gas town. No one knows that. No one knew that until the, it went up on the board. I'd like us to reconsider that and bump it up that extra penny. It's, what does that come to? About $100, $200,000?
$200,000.
I mean, that's money we need for our streets. No one wants to raise taxes on people, but it's gonna be a shared tax, because people driving on Kirk Road, they're gonna stop at the gas station, who live in Geneva, who live in North Aurora, who live in St. Charles, who live in Aurora, who are from out of town, and they're gonna buy gas at the Speedway. They're gonna buy gas at the BP on Randall Road. I mean, there's an opportunity for us to put more money into our streets, and we need to do it. So I'd like the council to reconsider that. And people will be upset, but, I mean, the gas companies raise it. I mean, we could be paying gas probably next, tomorrow or the next day at about $2.37, and they just jump it up and then ease it down. So one penny is not gonna bust anyone. And so I know it's not polite, or it's not, no one likes to hear it, but I'm saying it. So I think, I'd like us to reconsider that.
Those are good points. Are there any other, are there any comments or response?
I'm gonna echo your remarks, I noticed the exact same swing, and I also note that it was a seven to seven vote, and the mayor had to break the tie. So, this is what it is. Maybe next year.
Well, it isn't, it isn't what it is, though, Dan. I mean, Mike could make, or anybody could make the motion to amend this ordinance.
I would support it. I'm just...
I'll make that motion to amend it. Raise it another penny.
And I would second it.
All in favor?
Oh, wait, we got a motion and second on the floor.
Is there any other comments?
Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I'd already received a couple of comments after a post that I had done on Facebook explaining the tax increases, and there's the comment that, "Well, can I just drive to another town to, you know, avoid paying the tax?" And I said, "Yeah, you can, but is it any cheaper?" Probably not. And at the time of that, it was, it was actually in North Aurora, it was like five or six cents more a gallon. I looked at that point in time. But I've heard other comments, and I think it is just one of those things, it is, there is a negative aspect to it. That's my only opinion against it, is that it is gonna get out there. People don't read the fine print. That's why I posted where I posted, because people just read the headline and freak out. Taxes are going up, and they don't pay attention, it's gonna cost them 40 bucks over a year. I agree. But it just, I wouldn't support it.
Well, and I don't mean to go back and forth on it, but, and people may, for 20 cents, drive into the next town. I don't think the majority of people will do that. They might say, "I'm not gonna buy gas here," but I think when they're going to work and they're going shopping, 20 cents is virtually nothing. And so, that's why I'm supporting it. I don't, not looking to tax people, but I think people will threaten that, but not carry through, because it's just too much time spent driving, and it's gonna cost them more than 20 cents to do it.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
I agree.
Reception is real.
So I'm just putting that out there also.
Dan?
And to your point, and to your point, I cannot name the community between here and Elmhurst on my way to work that has the lowest gas tax. I cannot tell you which one that is. I have no idea. I just know that on my guess, but yeah, Batavia has cheap gas. That's all I know.
Marty?
Yeah, the, the whole point about it, though, is if you start collecting too much, you still can't, you only have so many people to do the actual work to get the stuff done, so you're playing catch-up. The whole argument about people aren't going to drive to another town, that's not true. Otherwise, Cook County would not have repealed their soda tax. People were going to cross the border to Indiana or to DuPage to buy their soda, and they were spending more money, sure, but it's the message that you're sending.
Is that true about the first part of your comment? I mean, it would be kind of like a reserve, and if we knew the money that we had, my understanding is we could plan to do more next year or the year after. So I don't know about not being able to spend the money that we save. Can you comment on that?
I can add to that. We had an IDOT grant that we were using to fund our resurfacing program, and those funds will be expired in 2018. So we need a funding source, which will be the general fund and the gas taxes that we're collecting. So the, if you did increase it by $200,000, it would mean that we wouldn't have to come up with $200,000 in the general fund. And the street program is about $1.5 to $1.8 million a year, and right now, the gas tax that's dedicated to the, to the street capital fund for resurfacing and reconstruction is only $400,000.
Any other comments?
I should point out that we didn't send out letters to all of the gas station owners, so I don't know if there are any here tonight, just so that you open it up to comment if there are.
Okay. And we do have a comment from the public. Sylvia, if you wanna come up and give us your name again, please?
[inaudible]
I'm not, I'm sorry, I called you Sylvia. Yvonne?
Yep, again, Yvonne Dinwiddie, 1156 Pine Street. You know, nickel and dimas to death. I noticed on our, our utility bills that the bills went up, and we used to pay $3 for leaf and brush pickup. Now we pay $5 a month, and we don't use it for five months, we don't use it that many months out of the year, and I hardly use it at all. And you have five TIF districts in Batavia, five. That means that every increase in every piece of property in that TIF district, instead of going into our general fund, going to our schools, going to our parks, it goes to these damn developers. And we can't afford to pay for what you should be doing for the taxpayers. Don't nickel and dime us to death. We don't need any more gas tax. What we need is to stop subsidizing all these developers, and we need to hold them accountable. We need to stop them from changing their minds every time they turn around, and we'll get to the one that's coming up here later on about his antics, is the best I can say. But, but we need to stop this. You don't think it's very much, but there are people who don't have jobs, there are people who don't have the money, and that nickel that you say doesn't matter that much, matters a whole heck of a lot to people who are buying, having to pay for prescriptions, paying for increased insurance premiums for healthcare, and increased doctor bills, and increased taxes all over the place. You know, you can't hide behind just a tax. Every time you raise a fee in Batavia, and every time I turn around, there's another fee you wanna impose in Batavia, or another thing you wanna do in Batavia, you can't keep doing that and think that we don't notice it. We notice it, believe me.
Anyone else? Okay, Lucy, it's back to you.
Mike?
Just, just for clarity's sake, you know, I don't wanna get into a back and forth, but the $3 we charge, or whatever it is we charge, doesn't cover the cost of it, the expense of it.
It, it does not cover the full cost with the amortization of the vehicles and equipment that we use.
So, and one last thing, I mean, everybody's sitting at this table, so we're all clear on it. Everybody sitting at this table has to pay for medical expenses. They have family members, they have mothers and fathers who are elderly, who are sick. So we're all in the same boat. It's not just us against the community. We're all part of the community, so I hope we all understand that. So enough said about it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments?
So for clarity, then, the motion was to increase the ordinance that's in front of us from four cents to five cents, a total of?
And this is, and can you recap quickly why we're doing this, the street fund, the need of the street fund?
Right. As I mentioned, we had an IDOT grant that will be expended next year, and there As I mentioned, we had an IDOT grant that will be expended next year, and there is no other source for funding for the Street Capital Fund except from transfers from the general fund and motor fuel tax. We get about 630,000 in motor fuel tax a year that we can use towards the 1.8 million, and then the balance of that has to come from gas tax and transfers from the general fund.
Okay, all in, all.
Do a roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call. O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
No.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
No.
Serone?
No.
McFadden?
Aye.
Risotto?
No.
Aye.
Stark absent, Chancet?
Aye.
Wolf?
No.
Salvati?
No.
Ann Brown?
Aye.
Six to seven, six As, seven As, motion failed.
Motion's failed. Okay, so now let's bring back up ordinance 1765.
Would someone like to make a motion to recommend to council the approval of ordinance 17-65 and ordinance increasing municipal retail motor, motor, motor fuel tax?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, thank you. Move on to item number nine, ordinance 17-67, the tax levy, SSA number 30, Alderman Etac.
So Peggy, all right, these ordinances for the levy and the levies for special service areas 30 and 57 are, are included. SSA 57 for Batavia means Main Street is less than 40,000 budgeted, as the SSA overlaps with the TIF clauses, an increase to the TIF distribution. There will be a levy for SSA 57 for 26,000 for Main Street. The levy is less than the 40,000 due to the way the county levies the taxes, it causes an artificial increase to the TIF, and the city pays that portion over to create 40,000 payment to Main Street in taxes. This is in addition to the 40,000 budgeted from TIF. In total, the city distributes 80,000 to Main Street. So does that mean that area 30 is 40,000?
No, there are actually two separate ordinances. The one for area 30 is a budget of 5,950, and we are levying 4,700 because of an overcollection in last year's levy. So we have reduced next year's levy, and this is for a detention area on the east side of town. So there is that ordinance, which is ordinance 1767, and then SSA 57, which is the Batavia Main Street levy, is ordinance 1768.
All right. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes?
Batavia Main Street, when that, when we started doing that, we talked about either sunset clause or fading them out. I mean, I'm all for them, but is that just an automatic thing in?
It has a sunset clause, and I'm glad you brought it up. This is the last year for, for this SSA, and it would need to be reformed after this levy.
Would someone like to make a motion to recommend to council the approval of, approval of ordinance 17-67 tax levy SSA number 30?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Would someone like to make a, are there any comments about ordinance 17-68 tax levy SSA 57 for Main Street, other than next? Yes?
Just a point of revision, on section one, it says SSA 30, where it should read SSA 57.
Okay, thank you. Yes. We'll correct that before it goes to council. And did everyone understand why that is reduced?
We were overcharging for a few.
Well, we weren't overcharging, it's actually the way the, the TIFs work in Illinois, and that, that Attorney General review that was forwarded to all of you, I think it was forwarded in the past as well, from myself, and Chicago keeps all of those funds, because legally, the city is entitled to keep those funds, but the council made a choice to only collect the 40,000.
Would someone like to make a recommended, a recommendation to council to approve ordinance 17-68 tax levy SSA number 57?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Item 11, resolution 17-129-R, authorizing change order number three with Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated for Phase One Wastewater Treatment Plant Rehabilitation Project. Alderman Chancet, you going to present these tonight?
Yeah, absolutely. 17-129-R is authorizing a change order, this is regarding some unsuitable fill that was identified under one of the buildings of the wastewater treatment plant. Gary, do you have any more on this, or?
Thank you, Alderman. On the last page of, of the, of this item within your packet is a summary of the change order. It lists the additions and deductions, which are, which comprise the change order, the most notable one being the one that Alderman Chancet just mentioned, the necessary to remove unsuitable fill under the proposed main building, or the building that we're constructing right now. And then on, just on the page in your packet, prior to that, was an overlay where we're showing the proposed building, which is the new building, and the existing building, which was the old building. And it's unfortunate that these soils happen to fall under our old building, which made it impossible, of course, for us to do soil borings to, to discover them and plan ahead for them. That being said, even if we had discovered them during the planning phase, we'd still pay for this, this excavation, and, and so it's not, it ultimately was going to be a cost to the city either way. But we are recommending resolution 17-129-R in the amount of 47,878 dollars.
Did they find anything cool, like an Edsel or something?
They have found various parts and pieces and items down there, yeah.
Okay. There's no other questions? I'd make a motion that we send resolution 17-129-R to city council for approval.
Can I make just one comment? I mean, this is, looks like it's like 1% of the, 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 the whole budget.
Correct.
Right? And so, we have other change orders, there are probably others coming, but at this point in time in construction, this is where you, you have the majority of them for unforeseen conditions. So I think you guys did a, a real good job, and I think Jerry did a good job.
Yeah, that goes to the designers, right.
Keeping, designing it and, and keeping their eye on it.
Yep.
Making sure we have things under control.
So we've, yes, done really well so far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I made a motion, second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Matt, is okay for the consent agenda?
Sure.
Yeah.
That one should.
And then Alderman Chancet, before we go to the next item, I want to just make a comment on, again, the wastewater treatment plant. At the last meeting, I brought up, and it was discussed a little bit, the lack of the hard surface down there around the food pantry area and such, and I think everybody got the email, and that's all been taken care of, so appreciate that. Okay, item number 12, resolution 17-126-R, authorizing purchase of a T-Rex Digger Derek truck from T-Rex Utilities for the amount of not exceed 268,757 dollars. Alderman Chancet.
So this one, we have budgeted for 2018, 280,000, and the bid is coming underneath that. Of note, the trade-in came in a little low, so we're looking to sell it ourself on a public surplus auction site. So we would need a motion to waive formal bidding first, and then another motion to send this to council?
This one can be just sent to council, and then council will take the motions to waive formal bidding and approve, yeah?
Okay.
So moved.
Second?
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay.
So not on the consent agenda.
Ordinance, item number 13, ordinance 17-69, declaring certain transformers, switch gears, and capacitors to surplus property. Alderman Chancet.
Surplus property at a value of 5,600 dollars, a bidder in South Dakota, and staff is recommending that we authorize the sale of this surplus property. Does anyone have any questions?
Gary, where did all this come from?
So these are items that we would have purchased new and had in our system, they could have been in our system from 20, 30, 40 years, and then when they reach their end of life, or they fail, we take them out of service, and, you know, we collect them until we get a lot of them, which is what, what we have now, we have a lot, lot as an auction lot, not as a number lot. And then, and then we, we go out and seek bids for them, and this company was the high bidder. It was asked of me before the meeting, you know, what happens to these things, and there are many utilities across the nation that, that can't afford, we're fortunate enough to be able to afford brand-new equipment, but there's utilities who can't afford brand-new equipment, and they can afford rehabbed equipment, and this, a lot of this, now, maybe not the 40-year-old ones, but the 20-year-old or 30-year-old ones that maybe failed, but could be rebuilt, will get rebuilt, and then that company makes their money by rebuilding and reselling them.
Thank you.
And this bid does include essentially useless material that they're willing to take away for free.
For us, it has no more use. Correct, exactly. It's, it's, we get a lot more money selling it in this manner than we would just sending it to scrap.
I make a motion to recommend passage, city council for passage, ordinance 17-69, declaring certain transformers, switch gears, and capacitators to be surplus.
Second?
Motion to second, any additional discussion? If none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. This is okay for consent agenda?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Gary. Next item is item 14, which is the discussion for the city to process raffle licenses or defer to Kane County to process the licenses. Our city administrator, Laura Newman, is going to present this?
Yes, so we have a process here in the city that seems to be just 100% duplicative of the process that the county currently has. In order for there to be a raffle in Batavia, that organization has to apply for and pay a fee to Kane County and get a license, but then turn around and come back to the city of Batavia and have an application, pay another fee, and get another license to do a raffle. And there doesn't seem, after checking with the, the police department and with the clerk who processes these raffle applications, I, we just can see no benefit that the city derives in having that additional process. So the request would be that we can defer to the county process and then eliminate the city process to obtain a raffle license. These are typically not-for-profit organizations, it's not something that is a great source of revenue for us that we would be giving up, it's just really, it's, we don't see any advantage in continuing the process at this time.
Dan?
I'm curious, what would happen if Kane County approved, and then we declined the application, and what would happen to the raffle? Was this meant for local control, or?
Yeah, I, I believe that they would need to obtain our permission in order to have that raffle occur within the city of Batavia, they would be able to perhaps have it elsewhere in Kane County, where there was no local ordinance requiring a license.
And staff can't think of an opportunity or a reason why we would want the extra control?
No.
How many man hours do you think this saves us by not having?
You know, probably a dozen per year, but it certainly is time that can be spent on activities that have more value add for the residents.
Okay. Anyone else? I don't have a problem with what staff's requesting from, I mean, I know it's a discussion tonight, do you need to write up a resolution on this, or what do we need to do?
Uh, yes, we probably have a change to our ordinance to eliminate that provision, so I'll bring that back to you.
Okay. Everybody good?
Yep.
Okay. Then we're going to move on to item 15, which is discussion on the changes to the planned composition of the One Washington Place project. I believe we're just going to let Chris Easton, our economic development, take care of this tonight. And then I think for the public's benefit, what we'll do, as I mentioned earlier a little bit about the process, Chris will present it, and then we'll just open it up to the committee here tonight to have conversation, discussion between ourselves, questions of Chris, questions of the developer who was here tonight, and then, of course, we'll ask for comments from the, from the public also.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You all received in the, in your packet for this meeting my memo on this subject, and I have a brief summary through slides to, to, for the benefit of the audience and for your decision-making tonight. I'm going to focus in on the impacts of the building reconfiguration, as well as the necessary amendments to the redevelopment agreement that's currently in place. I've entitled this, "One Economic Developer's Opinion," and I did so knowing, purposely, to let you know that this is, this memo was written by me, it represents my opinion, but as your economic development consultant, and I believe the, I stand behind it, it's not just flippant opinion, it's just, I want you to know that this doesn't necessarily represent the opinion of all the staff, but it is my opinion on these, on these matters. So the first one, in discussing the impacts of building reconfiguration, is on the finances. With respect to the city, if the reconfigured building plan is not allowed to move forward, the developer has indicated that they will not build the One Washington Place project. So in terms of the impact on, on the city's finances, that's a loss of about 47 million dollars in private investment for the project, which also includes about 11,750,000 dollars in investment to, to build the parking deck, which, as we know, is going to be covered by TIF funds, but it's the private development that is both investing upfront will be reimbursed and then pay back through taxes. So it does account for private investment of, again, nearly 50 million dollars on this project. Also, if the project's not built according to plan, it, there's a potential for the city to lose what amounts to about 5,725 square feet of new retail sales, which is generating, would generate both municipal and home rule tax for the tune of a penny per dollar, considerably assuming about 250 dollars per square foot annually in sales, and I believe that is conservative, particularly if we attract a restaurant at that site, that amounts to about 28,600 dollars a year in taxes. And that is 28,600 dollars a year above and beyond what the redevelopment site has, is, and for decades has not produced, as there's been no retail generating, retail tax generating uses with the development site for decades. I do want to note, in, in just a fair play, that the reconfigured plan does also contemplate the elimination of commercial on Wilson Street. So there is certainly a potential for the loss of sales tax that would be generated if those spaces were there. So I'm just comparing with out there now versus what could be built, or could be generated under the reconfigured plan, because we can talk about what could be there if Wilson Street remained commercial, and that's assuming a significant percentage, or any percentage, was in retail uses, but that would have to be under a different developer, because this developer is not going to build that project. So really, when you look at it with respect to At least One Washington Place, it's either you're going to have potential for 5,725, 5,725 square feet of commercial, or no commercial at all under the current proposal. In terms of what the impacts are on the developer, when we first presented the proposed reconfiguration, there was some discussion about, you know, this, are we just creating some kind of windfall or additional profitability for the developer? And according to our own consultant, Kane McKenna Associates, they did a development return analysis on the new plan, and they came back in their report with the findings that both the developer's internal rate of return and its rate of return on the cost are not excessive, and with respect to market averages. And they also came back with the conclusion that but for the city's financial assistance, at 16 million dollars in TIF funds, the project cannot yield anything near market averages. Second subject with respect to impact of the new configured plan is on parking. We took the new plan to the parking consultant that did the original plan, and you'll remember that was using the shared use methodology, and under that methodology, the approved plan has 348 parking spaces, and that results in a 54-space surplus over the demand for the block in question. So under the parking plan, in the old, in the current approved plans, there'll be enough parking created within the block. parking created within the block that will result in fifty-four spaces above and beyond what is demanded from the block's land use. In terms of the new plan, the reconfigured plan, that surplus actually goes up from fifty-four spaces within the redevelopment block to sixty-six spaces in surplus within the redevelopment block. Looking at the nineteen-block study area, and that nineteen-block, just to remind you, was taking the redevelopment block and establishing a six-hundred-foot radius, perimeter around the block. In that scenario, the existing plan that's been approved reduces the area deficit. Now, there's still a deficit in parking with respect to the demand analysis. In other words, there's a demand for parking above and beyond the available public parking. We didn't count private parking, because those are not necessarily available to the public, and therefore, they're not, we can only count the net parking, which is available to the public, and not restricted for private use. For that nineteen-block area, the approved plan reduces the surplus, or reduces the deficit in the area from two hundred and seventy-six to two hundred and forty-five. However, the revised plan with three hundred and thirty-five parking space in the garage reduces that deficit even further to two hundred and thirty-three. I put a little note at the bottom, letting you know, for someone that says, how does this make sense? And what makes sense is under the shared use methodology, you look for the peak demand of parking during the twenty-four-hour experience, and primarily, it's in the day, the work week, between one and two o'clock. And that's because there's such a demand for parking from the commercial uses, both by the customers and clients, as well as by the employees in that district. So, a, a single space of commercial activity, say, two thousand square feet of commercial activity versus maybe two dwelling units, a thousand square foot apiece, it generates a lot more demand than the residential use. So, that's the principal reason why there's such a, a better scenario or situation with respect to the, the demand analysis under the new plan. Commercial parks at a higher rate than does residential, and particularly during the demand period of, of the week. In terms of land use, what I did was I took a, a raw comparison between the approved plans and the revised plans, and I looked at certain aspects of the comprehensive and strategic plans with, related to land use objectives. And in one objective, clearly, it's, both plans indicate that we want to increase the number of residential units in the city's downtown. There is a slight increase under the revised plan versus the approved plan of nine units. So, I would say that, that would be a favorable change to the revised plan. There's also with respect to parking demand, as I just explained, there is a net parking, there is a reduction in the overall deficit of the downtown study area by an additional twelve spaces. And where, where we have a negative under the analysis, the, both the comprehensive plan and the strategic plan show as objectives that we want to increase street-level retail space within the downtown. Both plans, of course, increase the street-level retail space for the subject development area, because there isn't any retail now, and there hasn't been for quite some time. However, clearly, with respect to the potential of retail space, there is a negative impact with respect to those plan objectives between the plan that's been approved, whereas it calls in for almost, well, fourteen thousand six hundred square feet of commercial space versus the fifty-seven twenty-five square feet that I mentioned earlier. So, again, the potential for commercial activity and the potential for retail, all the things being equal, would show that two of the three, I'm sorry, just to focus on the third, there is a negative impact when you look at the difference between the revised plan versus the approved plan. But in the other two categories previously mentioned, there's a positive impact. I have some additional comments on this subject matter, and in the first one, in, in some research that I've done, in, in order to support my position recommending in favor the change, both Barbara Slicky with Kane McKenna Associates, our consulting firm for the financial review, as well as Denise Williams, who is one of the partner managers at Business Districts Incorporated, which is a fairly well-recognized planning firm based in Evanston, indicate that by requiring commercial-only occupancy for street-level building space in suburban downtowns, mixed-use developments, that adds a financial challenge and risk to such projects. Similarly, the developer himself said, in looking at those challenges and risks, they're exacerbated when you consider that East Wilson Street, the spaces along that front Wilson Street are along a part, a portion of the street that has a significant slope. In fact, as we found in the survey, land survey, that is, there's about a twenty-four-foot differential between the highest end, which is Will, Washington Street, and the lowest end on that slope at River, as I say, twenty-four feet. And also, the particular frontage along East Wilson Street is negatively affected by the fact that there are very limited, if any, commercial and retail uses within the reasonable proximity of the property. So, in other words, as, as we know, shopping, activity, retail, any level of commercial activity benefits when it's surrounded by more mass of commercial activity, and that's especially true of retail. There is limited retail at all to the east, I'm sorry, to the west of the subject site on Wilson Street, on the north end. On the south end, there is essentially no retail, except for a, a store that is a tobacconist, or tobacco shop and, and liquor store, and then down to Berkeley, there's some retail. On the north side, you really don't have any retail, all the way out to you at Prairie Street. So, those are not reasonably proximate to the site, that give the site a benefit of having passerby foot traffic and the mass of additional reasons to shop in that area. So, that is a negative impact on the retail capacity or earnings in the subject property, and therefore, again, adds additional challenge and risk to citing retail on that site. Finally, it's, this is my opinion, I believe that the city should, at this point, prioritize residential and parking over commercial, at least with respect to Wilson Street. And I feel that, because if you really wanna build a downtown, especially retail downtown, you should prioritize, if you've got the opportunity, putting residential downtown. Traditionally, retail follows rooftops in the industry, and the more people you have within a reasonable proximity to shop at a location, the more likely you're gonna get locations that allow for shopping. And if you can get essentially seventy-five percent of the project objectives, and I would say, in my mind, it's closer to ninety percent, which are the residential and the parking at this project, you should not let it go. And the fact is, if you had to prioritize, bring in the residential, add to the parking, and you'll see down the road a good likelihood that there'll be more commercial activity, because those residential shoppers and diners and consumers generally, and the parking will bolster both the existing spaces that are either underutilized, non-in-retail, or are vacant. They'll bolster the opportunity for those spaces to be rented, and, and in some cases, and more so as they become rented by retail, and it'll raise the, the values of those buildings for rental space. So, again, I think it's important to, if you had to make a choice, focus in on the opportunity that are the rooftops, and again, the parking, over the eight thousand or thereabouts square feet of potential retail space that may go vacant, that may be underutilized, and they, as Diane Williams indicated when she got back to me on, on my questions with BDI, that you're finding that by forcing commercial uses in these spaces that are otherwise not attractive to retailers, you're not getting retailers, you're getting service uses, you're getting, in large part, personal services, office uses, and not necessarily retail uses. Finally, and I'm not gonna go over all these points, because they're in your, your memo, but I provided four examples, and did I cherry-pick these examples? Yes. I'm sure there are other examples out there that are far more successful, but these four are clearly examples of where there's shown challenges to require commercial on ground floor. In fact, in one case, the first one I listed, Barrington, and they're listed alphabetically, so it's not by, it's a random situation, but the Barrington site, if you know the property, it's right on North Huff, which is Route fifty-nine, on the north end of the downtown, that's north of the tracks. So, it's kind of at the, the edge of the development site, or I should say, the downtown, especially the commercial district downtown. It's not in the heart, it's more to the edge, but so was the Washington Street, Washington Street and Wilson, One Washington Place project. The developer was so insistent that he not be required to have commercial on the ground floor, that he, similar to the situation today, said, "I, I can't build the project the way you're asking me, and I won't, and, and it doesn't make financial sense." So, the city, the village of Barrington, they amended their ordinance to allow, at that property, to allow residential on the ground floor. And so, it's presently under construction as sixty-four luxury apartments. The other projects I listed, they're having difficulty renting spaces on the ground floor. The project in Lyle, in fact, about half of the perimeter, two sides of it that face streets, are residential on the ground floor. I do find that the two key factors, in, in some cases, for successful mixed-use developments that are utilizing the ground floor exclusively for retail or commercial, are properties that the downtown area was already fairly built up in, in commercial development, Little Grains in Elmhurst, Wheaton. So, you've already got the rooftops there, and there's less risk in creating more commercial space. You've also got, in many cases, a train that goes through the town. So, that's also helps the project with potential commercial activity. And then finally, in many of those projects, you've got a, the key hard corner where two main arterial corridors meet is devoted to a retail corner. That serves as a destination or a, a main attraction to that project. We don't have that opportunity here. Perhaps it could've been retrofitted, I'm not ruling it out, but from the beginning, we said the priority is, let's use the hard corner, at least the one at Washington and Wilson, to preserve the iconic First Baptist Church tower. So, that footprint cut into the potential, that and the fact that so much of the land, so much of that space is nearly ten, you know, eight to ten feet underground at, at that floor. So, that would be almost a subterranean retail space. So, that corner couldn't be utilized, which was a good opportunity for commercial to act as an anchor and a destination and attraction point for the rest of the commercial. You don't have that anchor because of the physical, well, the, actually, it's more the topography of the site, but also preserving the iconic Baptist Church site. The good news is, is that the other corner for this project, another significant corner, when you consider that River Street has become a, a pretty decent commercial street in the downtown, that corner with State Street will be a commercial activity, a commercial space. So, you are preserving that opportunity. Finally, getting past the impacts, there are key amendments that need to take place in the redevelopment agreement, and, and the first and foremost is that the, the developer's requesting sixteen million dollars upfront in reimbursement, so that when the project is built, as it's being built and costs are being incurred by the developer, they wanna be able to submit their reimbursement request, and that has to go through a prove-up period where, you know, that we ensure that payment's been made on invoices, you know, waivers of lien have been, have been pulled off, and, but ultimately, they'll be drawing the check then. And that was the case under the former plan also, but then only we went to fourteen million. Under the form, under the, I should say, existing, under the existing plan, it caps at fourteen for upfront reimbursement. Then, as the project develops, or I should say, is occupied, and as the increment starts to come in, in the event, the increment meets the debt, and we're able to pay off the debt on the bond, and that is through, incidentally, payments from the developer, which are in, which are in TIF payments or special service area payments. Once that's done, then the rest of it is kind of a surplus increment, and we would be splitting that increment dollars per dollar with the developer until such time as the developer gets sixteen million dollars. At that point, that's maxed out, that's done with it. Under the current proposal, the developer's seeking sixteen million dollars upfront in reimbursement. And then, if we ever get to a point where we exceed that, that number, and we can pay off the bond early, then all other increment goes directly to the city, and the developer doesn't have a share in that. So, both of them maxed out at sixteen million. The difference is that the developer may not have gotten sixteen million under the first scenario, and the difference also is, in the event sixteen million is reached, in the first example, the city, the, well, the city would've been sharing the dollar per dollar until sixteen million. When the sixteen million's over, the city gets it all, the developer gets no more. Finally, there's, as you know, from the very beginning, the redevelopment agreement obligated the, the developer to pay the amount of the debt service annually from the bond issue, and that was either going to be through levying the SSA, well, it's through the increment, but if the increment falls short of the bond debt service, which it naturally will, certainly during the period of time before any occupancy, then the city would levy SSA tax, ad lorem tax on the property, and that would make up the difference. Under the scenario that's being proposed, the developer, during that time when the increment falls short of the bond debt, the developer has the option for the city to either enact the SSA or just cut a check for the delta between what is received from increment versus what is owed to service the debt. And finally, the redevelopment agreement amendment would, would get you up to date with respect to obligations. So, you know, right now, it says the city should acquire the land, the city needs to, you know, demolish buildings, and, you know, the developer needs to do this and that, get financing. So, certain things have been accomplished already. So, those are updated in the amendment, so that it doesn't read, "You need to do it by such and such a date," because they've already been accomplished. Terms of conclusions and recommendations, if built, the reconfigured redevelopment proposal would have such a positive and near immediate impact on the city's CBD, Central Business District, that although such impact would necessarily be slightly lessened when compared with the approved project, the loss of opportunities between the proposed revised plan and the approved plan is miniscule when compared with the opportunities lost between the proposed revised plan and no current development redevelopment plan at all. There's a very significant economic development bird in the hand before the city today. This should be considered and compared with a completely unknown, both in terms of development type and magnitude and timing. So, a completely unknown, hope for, two birds in the bro, in the bush. And finally, as the city's economic development consultant, excuse me, I guess that was not a habit, I strongly recommend that the committee of the whole express its unequivocal direction of the developer and to the staff to work together in bringing the One Washington Place project to fruition pursuant to the revised redevelopment plans. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but perhaps at this time, we can also have the developer be prepared to answer any questions as well. So, whatever your pleasure, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thanks, Chris. So, like I think I mentioned, let's open it up to the committee now for conversations between ourselves or questions of Chris, and if we have a question for the developer easier also. Lucy?
Chris, can, do you have any idea how much retail square footage there is in downtown Batavia right now?
You know, not off the top of my head, I, the number, I have it, but I can't remember.
I'm just trying to get an idea of what percentage nine, eight to nine thousand dollars is of the total retail, or eight to nine thousand square feet loss is to the total retail.
In terms of strictly retail, I would guess there's probably close to, well, Berkeley's at, if you go out to Berkeley's, it's probably seventy thousand square feet, I guess. It might be perhaps a little more. There's some, obviously, the vacancy rate, though, is pretty substantial, we consider fourteen, twelve or fourteen thousand square feet of Walgreens is vacant. We've got incidental vacant spaces, both at the ten-dash-ninety Island Avenue. We've got incidental vacant spaces, both at the 10-90 Island Avenue, and then sporadically along Wilson Street, there's some vacancies. But I-
And then there's the land across the street that's not built yet, but potential for retail, right?
You're talking-
Across the street from One North Washington to the south.
Correct, yes. All the way from, I would say, the art stop parking lot, up the street to the corner at South Washington, which is now a single, well, I guess there's an occupant to the back, but essentially, the store I mentioned, the liquor and tobacco store, that hard corner and across the street where the gas station is, was, that offers an opportunity for more retail as well. But where I see the real opportunity for retail right off the bat, when this project is being built, is the buildings that are vacant or utilized in a non-retail way. If a retailer were interested in those spaces, they would demand a higher rent. So right now, because we have limited commercial activity and especially retail in the downtown, that suppresses the rent, because, you know, places, some of the other places that are there instead, won't pay $12 or $15 a square foot. But the owner hasn't wanted to go vacant, so he rents to someone else that is not perhaps a retail or a, you know, desired, most desired use. I can get that information, though, and I'd be happy to get it for you.
Picture. That's good enough. Thanks.
Ellen?
The one question that I have is, and I know we can't discuss the pro forma in open session, but the percentages that were there on the first RDA compared to what we're looking at now for revised, would that percentage for the developer be higher or lower?
In terms of rate of return?
Right.
It is higher.
It is higher on the second one?
It is higher.
Okay.
Quite frankly, the first project, our, I can say this, because it's a general phrase, the analyst, Bob Rizlik, with Kane McKenna, considered the profit to be very thin, and was surprised it was financeable from the developer. You know, you have to get certain rates of return on cost, especially.
Right.
Or you can't get lending. And it was, it was that tight on that, and those were the terms he used, that this project is very thin with respect to profit. Where it is now is, is someplace, you know, right in about the middle range of what is expected market value. Market value, as you know, in terms of what your lending's going to be, is based a lot on risk. And this new project reduces some risk. If it comes up, and it probably will on the Oswego project, the risk is reduced there because you've got 30% more apartments than you do in this project. Apartments are easy to rent, commercial not so much. So there is still significant risk, and that drives the cost of financing.
Thank you.
Marty?
Yeah. All of this is sales and negotiation, where we're just, we could sit here and make points all day long about this, that, or another thing. And the developer has already done that themselves, when they're looking through all these pros and cons of whether or not they walk away from a $42 million investment and so on and so forth. They're able to do so because they know they're, they need to make some changes to it for this project to happen. And they've said, if they can't build this, they'll walk away. Well, we went through and we hammered out all these things, and for me, thought long and hard about what we want. All of these, everything that you're saying makes sense, but then I can sit here and play devil's advocate on this point, that point, or another thing. But it still comes down to, at the end of the day, we're spending $16 million on something we want to buy. And the changes for me are enough for me to say, "I no longer want to buy this. I don't want these changes. I think these changes are away, further away, from what I originally thought and wanted and justified why my vote was originally a yes on this." We're taking minuscule away all the things that shifted it to now no longer wanting to do this. It's a, for me, it's kind of like a trip to, my wife's trip to Target. She's supposed to go there, and she's going to spend $50 on some essentials, but then goes and spends $100. Well, we didn't gain $50, we lost $50 on not having to spend that if we didn't want that stuff. So for me, I'm a no. And I think based on all of these things, I've thought long and hard about them, I've thought about what the consequences would be, that this doesn't go through, and it's just, I no longer want this. It's as simple as that.
And I appreciate that. And it's a, again, as I said from the beginning, and I hope that my candor was at least well-received, that this is an opinion. This is what I believe to be the case. But I do want to, we're all entitled opinions, you've heard it before, but we have to live with the facts, and the facts are, in my opinion, your analogy doesn't cut it with me, and only because you're not going, "I'm going to give you $14 million, you're going to build this project, and I'm going to give you $16 million, you're going to build this project." What you're really doing is, I'm going to lend you $14 million of a bond issue, and you're going to pay back not just the principal but the interest. Now I'm going to lend you $16 million, and you're going to pay back the principal of the interest. This, now Yvonne's point is that, wait a minute, this is her, our money. Well, it's actually all the taxing body's money. But the whole point behind TIF, and the reason the statute is written this way, is because the project is otherwise not a development site unless you do incentivize it. That's the but-for clause. So when you incentivize the project, it happens. And then, hopefully in 23 years, and we know it sometimes takes longer than that, but at least the way we've budgeted it through our finance department, in 23 years and maybe before then, we'll have paid this off. Then it's windfall time for all the districts. Now you're getting all this money back that was otherwise going towards the project. But it's still, it was the developer that was paying those fees, or that $16 million from the increment, as well as from the SSA if need be. So we can cap what, the city can cap what they want to put into it, but you're putting into it TIF funds. You're not paying out general fund. Yes, you're going to be deferring those monies that would otherwise be spread around to the different districts, including the city, for 23 years, or ideally less if we can expire it early. But ultimately, the payoff, the windfall benefit at the end, is so substantial that it's worth it. And that's why the statute's written that way.
But I think that goes to why I'm having a hard problem with, or a difficult problem with this, is because previously, when we voted for it and we decided what we decided on it, your opinion was we needed commercial, because the commercial was going to beget this, and the commercial was going to have an influx of new commercial, because we've got existing downtown buildings that are not profitable to retrofit yet. But if we have new commercial that's going in, that's plug and play, it makes it easier for those to go in, thereby, when more people move in, you're going to make those older buildings more cost-effective to retrofit, and you're going to have those things, which then it kind of dominoes into, we're now putting 194 more, not 194 more, we're putting more people in, up to 194 units, with less parking, and we're saying that, on the one hand, we have less of a demand because we're going to have the reduction in commercial, so those people aren't going to. But our goal is to have more commercial down here in the long run, because we want to be able to support those 194 that are living in here. So eventually, we're kind of short-sighting and undercutting our parking situation and exacerbating it and making it a problem, because we know our goal is to have more commercial in the long run. And if we've already short-changed ourselves right now, then where are we going to put the additional traffic that's going to come in? And then it just expounds, it compounds upon itself. That's where-
Chris, I see.
I'm sorry, right.
Marty, I want to, can I jump in around that?
Sure.
Because I think, you know, I agree with you that, you know, we all wanted the commercial, and we all want commercial, not wanted, we all want commercial. But at the same time, I don't think we, when we all made that decision, or when we all thought about what that development could do for us and the commercial that it could bring, we certainly didn't have the knowledge that we have now, that there's 24-foot of elevation change. And that in order to put commercial on Wilson Street, where there's 24-foot plus or minus of elevation change, it's going to create a huge constructibility and sellability criteria on that property, where, you know, some of it would be subterrane, some of it would be very hard to make ADA accessible, some of it would be chopped up into such small spaces because they would have to stair-step it, more or less, to make up for that grade, that, sure, we want commercial, but to your analogy of going to Target and buying something, when you got in your mind to go into Target and buying something, you know what you're going to buy. And, you know, you're not going to settle for something less. But now that we know the constraints that we have there, just to say that we want commercial is, you know, it's like a kid wanting a lollipop, you know, you can't have everything you want. It would be great to have commercial there. But as I'm trying to get across my point here, knowing that the construction constraints that it would bring and the cost that it would bring, in order to provide something that may or may not be able to be filled, because we don't know whether or not there's a demand for those types of spaces, because of the way they're going to have to be built, I'm now looking at it more like what Chris is explaining, that we're going to get 8,000 plus or minus square feet more than what we have now, we have nothing now, and we're going to get the residents, which is going to be the rooftops, which, you know, Class A 101A tells you, developers or retailers look for rooftops. If you don't have rooftops, you're not going to get retailers. That's the biggest reason why we've never been able to get a grocery store out on Kirk Road, because there's no rooftops to the east of Kirk Road. So I, I'm a believer in the rooftops, and I'm a believer in commercial, but the commercial's got to be a square footage that makes sense. And knowing now what we know about that terrain and that, and I, you know, maybe we should have known sooner, maybe we should have put more thought into it sooner before we said, "We want commercial." Maybe I should have said, "Does commercial work there? There's 24-foot of terrain." But I didn't, we didn't, and now we know. And so now we're looking at, does it make sense? Yeah, we all want it, but does it make sense? Can you do it? Just because you want it doesn't mean you can do it.
And I, I fully appreciate and understand what you're saying, and I agree with you on those things, if that was the consideration that we're making, or we're swapping it out. What my concern now is, and that would be okay if we weren't adding more people, but now we're adding more area, or more units and more people to a downtown, while not equally adding commercial in other areas for people to go to. If we have, you know, 10 places for people to go to, and we had, and we thought that was going to support 180 units, and we're going to add more, well, now we're adding more people, but we're not adding to the amenities that people are going to want to go to. So then in my mind, it starts to go to, is it more or less desirable that now you're just living in an apartment complex in the downtown without the amount of places that we want them to go to? Are we putting now too many people in? I understand what you're saying about the, "Do we want it?", but at a certain point, you can put, you can keep putting more and more and more people in, but there's got to be a break-even point where-
No.
Now you're not going to have, you're going to have too many people living in an area where there's not enough infrastructure to support it.
Dave? I mean-
Mark?
I agree with a lot of what you just said there, Marty, and I think, Chris, I really appreciate the research and everything that you put into this. I was probably almost convinced to say, yeah, you know, I'm in favor of this, until, and you brought it up, Oswego. And so we're getting, you know, we're just getting a cookie cutter, and that's what made me feel uncomfortable in the end, was that we talked about making this for Batavia, making it special for Batavia, the coloring and things like that, but then now it feels, feels like nothing, feels like, "This is what we have to do, because this is what we've already paid Architect," and I'll let Dave, I'll let you answer that, "but this is what we paid already. We have this design in our back pocket," and that's, that's one of the reasons they can do it. And I get it, I get the economies of it. McDonald's doesn't build, you know, 14,000 different-looking McDonald's, because it's far too expensive, but now it just doesn't feel like this is Batavia. This is, that's, that's the thing that pushes me off right now.
And I appreciate that. I can't say that, you know, the Batavia plans, if it means anything, were developed and they were ahead of Oswego. So one would argue, if I'm selling something, and someone's buying it, maybe I shouldn't break it, you know, maybe it's not broken, why fix it? So probably the sense is, decision-makers in small historic downtowns like this plan, maybe that's what the market is asking for also, that's what the renters want. I agree, I mean, although, believe me, they're not going to have a First Baptist Church tower in Oswego. But that said, I saw that come out, and it did hit me in the gut at first, but I did think imitation, you know, is the highest form of flattery, I guess, and this is a good product, and this is what apparently will attract renters. And certainly, it was, it wasn't like, it didn't go through the grueling. To now say that the architecture is a problem because someone else has it, doesn't make sense. If you thought the architecture was good when it was built, then it still hasn't, it's still good. That's my opinion, but I see your point, it gives a little less, here's the Batavia project, but I can guarantee you, and I mentioned this today when I was thinking about this to Laura, you know, you, between 1900 and 1930, there were, you go up and down the Fox Valley, and you will see the same commercial buildings, one after the other, the other. That speaks to the architecture of the time, too, you know? So maybe this is a reflection of the type of architecture people are looking at now.
Lucy?
Okay, I guess I'm, a couple things. Residential drove this project, not commercial, as I recall. We have been looking to have residential downtown, like so many of the other towns in the Chicagoland area, for three decades, is our, maybe longer. This, the commercial development, the retail development will come after the residential. We have a lot of vacant retail space downtown, plus we have vacant land, plus it can expand. I mean, you can expand into homes and that sort of thing. So to suggest that there's going to ever be a point when we have too much, I mean, commercial down, excuse me, residential downtown, that would be too much for our retail business doesn't make any sense. We need this residential to bring retail downtown, and we've been talking about this forever. So I, I think to suggest that commercial was part of the driver here is not quite accurate.
Dan?
I realize this is probably a bit of a technical question, but it kind of helps me understand the risk. Is the financing something you can disclose? Is it a community bank? Is it a big bank?
It is Fifth Third Bank.
And then for Chris, let's just say we, we scrap the project and go with somebody else, are you convinced that we're going to see a proposal that looks almost exactly the same if we're asking for residential? We're going to get another developer coming in here, showing us 180-some units with subterranean parking and no residential on Wilson? I just, I just want to save us the time. Is that what we're going to see if we vote this thing down tonight?
The one thing I'm almost 100% certain of, is as we go through the requests for qualifications to find another developer, and hopefully that's a successful one this time, it was not, as you know, the first time, that you won't get the same project. You might get a better one, you might get, but you're, the way this project lays out, I don't know, with the exception of the commercial, and I did state in my email that, or my memo, all things being equal, it'd been great to have successful commercial on Wilson Street. It didn't work out. And part of the reason it doesn't work out is because of the subterranean issues, where you need the height of the building and whatnot. So that's going to be the same case. They're still going to have this bedrock, they're still going to have this topography the way it is. So if the, it doesn't make sense from a financial feasibility, with respect to construction cost, and then looking at the possibility of renting the space the way that the slope is, it's not going to make sense to the next guy either. This is something we all learned. Dave's point was right on. I mean, the topo was out there, but we envisioned, hey, there are places where you've got some slope, but you also look at those places, and I'll give you a perfect example, and it's one of your projects, in Geneva, on State- In Geneva, on State Street, on the south side of the street, where at the corner, you've got a nice restaurant, the Mexican restaurant, but down the street, all of those spaces are either office, there's a fitness center, and, and that's a more, that slope is no more severe or less than the one, it might even be less, but it's, it's certainly not a good retail spot. You know, people are not keen about walking up and down these slopes, even if you can get level spaces. But I guess to answer your question, I don't know where you're going to get this, someone coming in and say, "Here's my idea. I'm going to build 355 parking spaces that can be for public use." That was not the original plan, incidentally. The original plan was parking, well, you know it. Original plan was, "I'm going to park my use first." But we couldn't get the bonding tax-exempt unless they were public spaces. So we won that one. That was, that was a win. We, when they first proposed it, they were not real keen on commercial either. But the staff, Scott's team especially, they saw the comprehensive plan and they saw the strategic plan, and it only makes sense to extend the commercial corridor of your district wherever you can. So that was in the plan. They were going to build that. But then they found out the costs were so bad. So they had to look at ways of reducing their cost and increasing their revenues. And one good way to reduce the cost is take out a 10-foot-high space to accommodate commercial and scrunch that down to more like seven feet or so, and then you don't got to go so deep into the rock. So it wasn't just flippantly, "It ain't going to work." As it's certain, as it tends to happen here, I think there are good reasons why that commercial space would not be real marketable, even if we weren't considering the cost, because of the slope and, and because you're at the, you're not surrounded by retail already. So I don't know. I guess that's my answer to your question.
And then just briefly to follow up on that, and I'm sorry I'm asking you this with Dave sitting next to you. Do we, do we still have other developers waiting in the wings? I mean, now that this land is completely leveled and it's all green and stuff?
Well, we haven't put a-
To your, your report that you wrote, you said that he could walk away or they could walk away. That's not really a, that's not really a threat if we have people that kind of want to show us another proposal.
Chris, you, get by the mic, please.
I don't know of another proposal. I will be candid in that we had a conversation with someone that does development. They do mostly housing development and affordable housing components. But they have built some hotels, for instance, and they've built other product. It's a, it's a pretty good-sized developer from a Point West. And while we had him in a meeting to talk about frankly, a hotel site, we were starting to get the feeling that this project was questionable. And so we mentioned to this gentleman, you know, "If this project went away, is there any interest on this?" And what he said to us, this would be Lauren and myself, and I'm going to try to keep it so it's fairly generic, so not to disclose certainly who it was or any specifics, but he said, "You know, perhaps there's a way to work a hotel in with an affordable housing complex here." Because that's kind of his business plan, where there's tax credits associated with that. That is the only other person that's talked to me about a project at that site. But that said, we have not gone out for an RFQ, and it's very possible that developers that are in the same type of development program that Shodine is, and by the way, there's not many like that in the suburbs, they might think, "Hey, we're not looking at Batavia. The project's under, it's been approved." I mean, they don't, why waste time looking for a project that no one says, "We want to hear from you." So it's possible, but I, I don't know when. And Peggy may want to speak to that, too, because the real problem you've got here is as we don't do things, the TIF starts to clock out. So this project, because it's so dependent on TIF dollars, I don't think it can be built if we lose another year or so on the thing. And I think you're all well aware that another year is, would be potentially the least amount of time we'd lose if we had to go back to the drawing board.
So can, can I ask a question, you know, quite simply? The difference from the first proposal to the second proposal is that the lid was $16 million, the first proposal. But it was questionable if it was, the project wasn't successful, you wouldn't get that addition, you're always getting the 14, you wouldn't get that additional two if it wasn't successful. So the second proposal is you're guaranteed that additional two. So that's, that's quite, that's putting it simply, correct?
Correct. So it was 14, sharing between 50-50-
Right.
-up to the 16.
Up to the 16.
Versus now, it's 16, 16 up front.
Right.
And the whole concept behind that is we know what the costs are and we need this 16 to cover, to cover the costs. Otherwise, there's no funding source for that, that two, between the 14 and the 16.
So that's, that's one difference from Proposal 1 to 2.
Correct.
The other change is basically the, the loss from the project, not the loss from Batavia, but the loss from the project of 8,000 to 9,000 square feet of retail. And I understand why you can't put it in because of the slope and the, the bedrock underneath. I get that. And that's pretty much the only real difference from one to the other. Is that a true statement?
Well, I mean, in fairness, there's more buying power with the more units. I mean, it's marginal.
Right. But that's marginal. So, so what we had, I guess what I'm trying to say is, in the very beginning, we said, "Hey, this could be a game changer for the city of Batavia." And, and for that amount, I mean, we're still guaranteeing $16 million, that hasn't changed. And, and it's going to be covered prior to the sunset of the TIF. And if the, if the project is successful and highly successful, which I think we were kind of conservative with our numbers-
Very conservative.
-right? That the project should be successful, is that we could be adding to the TIF sooner than 23 years. Okay? That wishful thinking, perhaps, okay? So I guess, I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater by saying, "I'm done with this project because there was some changes made." Now, I know in construction, you know, a general contractor doing a large project, whatever this project is, between 50 and 60 million, would go to some subcontractors and they would say, you know, tighten up your number, you know, get a sharper pencil, and hey, we had some changes. We did some, some, we had some cost savings that we have to take into effect and value-engineer this. And there's always going back to people and they're always reconfiguring things and reconfiguring product or reconfiguring, reconfiguring a lot of different things for it. It could take a long time to get there. So I just, this was a game changer and it was about rooftops. And the bonus was going to be the, the retail. And we'd love to have more retail, but I have to believe that we're getting a free garage, in essence. In 23 years, we're going to have a free parking deck. And, and we're going to have in 23 years, not in my lifetime perhaps, but in 23 years, the city of Batavia is going to, going to, going to be to benefit of a windfall when that's, that TIF sunsets. And the school district has realized that with the shopping mall down on Kirk Road and the freeway. All of a sudden, this windfall of money fell into their lap when that TIF sunset. And this is what will happen, and that's why we make decisions today for the future. Yet we will get a free parking garage. It will cost the city nothing. And I understand, you know, people's, you know, adversity towards the TIF saying it's taken from the school district. But that is the way that people in the Rust Belt are able to start to reinvigorate their downtowns. And that's, it's a tool municipalities have and we're utilizing that tool. So was I clear on what I said? Does that make sense?
It made perfect sense. And in my opinion, it's something that we shouldn't understate, is that someone is going to build us a parking garage. And those, as we know, are, this is going to cause-
Chris, use the mic.
Basically, through the TIF, the developer is going to build a $12 million parking garage.
And one last, to Lucy's point, we get the rooftops, retail will come. It will follow. And we do have space in our downtown that we need to fill. And it will follow. So I think it will bring retail.
Mr. Chairman, can I add a couple of comments?
Sure.
To start off with, I'd like to remind everybody that we have about a million square feet of commercial space in our portfolio that throughout the Tri-Cities. We're not afraid of retail. What we don't like is vacant retail. And what we believe and what we're seeing in this is that the cost to construct this retail, and I think one of the aldermen mentioned it, the cost is too high to build that retail. You're not going to get a return on that retail. And the retail is going to sit vacant because it's not going to be quality space. So that's why it's coming out along Wilson Street. Believe it or not, we looked long and hard with the architect to try to add retail more along the river, because we thought there was a better opportunity there. However, again, with the slope that we're dealing with, it also, almost becomes subterranean or you're in the basement in the back of the space. And guess what? We lose parking spaces. And guess what? We add commercial, we increase demand of parking spaces. So we have that teeter-totter that, that we're playing with. So I guess I don't want anybody to think that we're trying to run from the commercial because we're afraid of the commercial. We're absolutely not afraid of the commercial and we wish the commercial would, would have worked, but it, but it doesn't. Regarding the architecture, I, I can't disagree, I have to disagree with you that, that's way, way far-fetched. Nagel Hardtrade, in their presentation, Nagel Hardtrade indicated, stated, and went throughout downtown Batavia to try to bring elements of architectural style into this building. If you believe that this is a rubber stamp or the off-the-shelf plan, show me where this building exists somewhere else. We've been in business for 50 years. Nagel Hardtrade's been working with us for about 17, 18 years. They've done River North, they've done Dotson, they've done buildings in Mill Creek, they're doing buildings in St. Charles. None of the buildings look the same. None of the buildings are rubber stamps. And we pay a premium for what we believe is quality architecture that blends in with the, with the area. And I believe that one of the most significant key features and unique features of this building is the bell tower. That, you, I, you, we, again, million square feet of retail and we had, at one point in time, 2,000 apartments, show me a bell tower that Shodine has built in the last 50 years. All right? Well, you're going to find one. So the, the architecture, to me, is unique to Batavia. There's no, we call it the triple-pronged, it's been called an H-building. There's, there's several different names because of the way that it's, the way that it's shaped. There's no triple-pronged building that we have built, built in the past. So I get very sensitive on the architecture, plus the dollars that we pay, plus the creativity that we think we've gotten for those, for those dollars. So I'll get off that soapbox. If I can jump into the comment about the IRR, and I know we can't get into details on the IRR, please keep in mind that that was in a pro forma. That pro forma, when costs increase in that pro forma, the IRR falls. And it fell below zero. So although it was an IRR that was on a piece of paper, it had bad, bad data. And we've talked about the bad data, which is the cost of the construction.
I wanted that to get out there because I think people have to understand that if it doesn't make sense to do it and you're not going to get a return on it, you wouldn't build what you're not going to make any money on.
Okay.
And that's what I wanted to make sure got out to the public. So I've had a lot of questions about that.
Yeah. And it, and leading to the next point, I don't want you to take it as a threat. It's a, I'll call it a promise, but it's a commitment. We still believe in Batavia. We believe that there's a great opportunity in a project here. But it, it makes no financial sense to build the existing, the existing building. And we've been here quite a while and we're certainly willing to step off the dance floor and let somebody else do the dance and if they, they think they can get it done. We believe that we have the, the answer. Fortunately, we had to, we had to tweak it. I'd love to please Scott, I've known Scott for a long time, I'd love to give him his retail that he wants along Wilson. Scott, you know, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't see how it, see how it works, so-
You, you don't think that if, if we say no to you, you don't think one of your competitors will find a way to make commercial work? You don't believe that on Wilson?
I, I don't. Now, when you say, "Will they make commercial work? Will they make commercial work with a two-story parking garage built into the ground with so many apartments up above?" I doubt that. Do I think they'll come along and build a strip center along Wilson Street that's 60 feet deep over the surface parking lot? Sure, we could do that. When we first started this project, I believe we had three or four different plans that we brought to staff. And we had everything from townhomes to, you know, to this triple-pronged building that's never been designed before, that, that we brought forward. And I, what happened through all this, the staff and Shodine working together was this building rose to the, rose to the, to the top.
And we, we wouldn't get a competitor come back with a three-pronged building that put commercial on Route 25 on the first floor? We wouldn't get more commercial? We wouldn't get a second stage?
I don't want to say-
Offices or something like that?
I don't want to say you never would. You, you might. You might. I, 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 I don't know. I, I can't.
You know, I think something else that has to be, not that this should be a deciding factor, but something else that maybe should be brought up, and Dave, maybe you have better experience on this than I do, but the cost of construction. I mean, every day in the newspaper and on the radio, you hear about how, how things are booming and there's no labor force out there to do it and the costs are going up. I can tell you that in my business, we're doing a project kind of similar to what Shodine's proposing here as far as our scope of work. And it's a two-phase project and the second phase has been pushed back two years. Okay? Well, now it's proceeding ahead. It's gone up 7%. Just my cost. 7% in what it's going to cost that developer now to proceed ahead. I don't know if you see that as customary?
Not, no, it's not customary, but it is, it is happening. You're, you're in the concrete business. If you look at lumber, I don't know, if you look at futures on lumber, I think you'd find that random lengths lumber and plywood is, I think, last time I checked, it is about a 15 to 20-year high. What happened to the 2006 and '08 lumber building booms where everybody was building houses and where the lumber is higher priced, higher priced than that? Lumber, wood, it's either wood or concrete or steel. So yes, prices are, prices are way up.
So my point to that, I guess, is when we're talking between 16 million, 18 million, 14 million, whatever it is, the $2 million difference is that we're talking about, which is again, a loan, not a gift, the longer we wait, you know, if we say no to this project, as somebody just said, maybe it was Chris, it's not going to be a year before we see another one. It's going to be two, three years before we get another one to this point. But before they even get started. What's the cost going to do then? I, I don't know. It could go in reverse again, you know, we could, but if it goes in reverse, that would probably mean it wouldn't be getting built. Because things aren't good enough for, for that to happen. I want to make one final comment, I think, on my part, because I just feel like I need to. At the last meeting that we had where we discussed this, I was probably pretty critical of the process. The process and/or the developer. And if you had some time to think about that, and I think I was probably way off base on that. Maybe not so much the process, but my frustration level just, just built up, where it had gone on so long, we weren't hearing what was going on. Why did it take so long for us to find out that this thing actually is over budget? Not just a rumor that it may be over budget. So I was frustrated about that. I was frustrated about some dates that I saw on some drawings. And then again, as was just disclosed, being in the business that I'm in, I think what I've come down to is, is my frustration came from the fact that I took it personally. Because I feel like this is my town. Where in my business, I look at it more as a business. And in my business, I, I see projects like this, like I just mentioned, I see projects like this all day, every day. And I'll be working on a drawing today that I won't see again for three months. And then a month later out here, yeah, it's back on the table again, I'm going to be sending you some new drawings. And then two months later out here, well, it's over budget, we're having a look to see what we can do. A month later, I get a phone call or an email saying, "Hey, it's coming back out, but it's completely new, different drawings. We've been working with the city to see what we can do." And I guess the point I'm trying to make here is, is, is my frustration probably came out a little bit too much on the developer. I think my frustration was accurate with the process. But in saying that, I think we've got a good developer here to work with. I think we've got a project that, that would be very, very successful. I think it would bring the retail to the downtown. I think it would be an economic engine for 20 years from now when the TIF expires, as the mayor's mentioned numerous times, that we need to be- the mayor's mentioned numerous times, that we need to be looking for alternate resources for revenue as the years come when we're all gone. And I think the project itself, as I mentioned in that last meeting, I think the current plan, as is being proposed, is a more attractive building than what was originally proposed. I think the facade of it is more attractive on particularly State Street, and even on Wilson Street, where now it's a possibility that there could be some small little, you know, enhancements to the streetscape along there. Instead of the building being a straight line, parallel with the curb, 10 feet off the curb, that now the way it was presented to us could, you know, it could be back a little bit, and there could maybe, you know, the entrances to the residence there could be, you know, enhanced somehow. So, you know, the money, I've had a lot of people telling me, and believe me, I've heard from a lot of residents on this one, don't give Shodin any more money. Well, we're not giving Shodin any money, it's a loan. So that kills that thing. Don't work with Shodin. He does this all the time. This is his MO. Well, I don't know. Like I said, I've had some time to think about that, and I think we got a pretty good developer sitting here in front of us tonight. The mayor's had a meeting with them, and maybe the mayor could speak somewhat to what he thinks about this project, too. But I think I've said enough. Mike?
Just one question for Dave. How confident are you that you will not be back with another change?
We won't be back with another change. It's, if it doesn't, we won't be back with another change. There's two options left. One is, the project gets built, or we come back and say, whether it's, you know, we lost the financing, we can't get it, we can't, whatever it may be, we're not building the project, but we're then not a threat, we're done.
So your numbers for construction costs, you think are pretty accurate?
Yeah.
You're confident?
We had to attack the most critical and most expensive items in the building. And that's what we feel that we went at, and we did. And it cost us money to do that. The set of drawings that we've prepared, that we have sent out for bid, throw them out the window, spend, you know, somebody made a comment to me that there was a discussion about $50,000 in drawings. Drawings don't cost $50,000. But the contract is $550,000 for a set of drawings. So somebody forgot a zero in there. So it's, we're throwing away hundreds of thousands of dollars to start plans again. But we know we had to go in and attack, get at the root, you know, the big cost items. And we think we've done that with this revised plan.
Okay.
Elliot? I respect what you're saying, Dave. I mean, the initial reaction is usually always the sharpest, the strongest, you know, kind of knee-jerk reaction. But when I, while I've had a couple of weeks now to think about this, I still come back to, I think the frustration that we had was accurate because six months went by where we really weren't hearing what was going on. If there was, in fact, a problem being worked on, we weren't hearing the details. To get this plan back here now, and I respect we know more now than we did a year ago. That's hopefully always going to be true. But thinking back on this project, I don't remember hearing a lot of commercial along either side, State or Wilson, was going to be a problem. It was, this is something to be excited about. And the slope being there is not new. And I know we had a change order that was put through back in April-ish, where we had to, it was a significant change order, having nothing to do with this project. And it was because of the bedrock being there that it was so expensive. So we knew about that well over six months ago. And so when I see this plan and put all those things together, and wonder where the research, you know, thought, if you will, was that, you know, this was going to be a problem. And now that we are, instead of loaning a guaranteed 14 million for X amount of parking, well, we're actually going to be guaranteeing 16 million for less parking. And the parking is ours. At the end of the day, the parking is ours. I respect the study, the revised study, that says, you know, we're going to cut into the deficit of parking more with this revised plan. But while I hear what you're saying, Lucy, that, you know, the goal was always to put rooftops down there, part of what got my yes support in the past was, this was not just apartments. This was something that was carrying our River Street, beautiful view of people walking left and right, stopping in at shops, restaurants. And I don't see that anymore now.
There's still, there's still commercial. There's still commercial, and there's still the parking deck.
There is 9,000 less square feet of commercial. And that's where I struggle.
One of the things we talk about a lot is taking the long view, the 5, 10, 15, 20-year view, seeing the big picture, looking at all that kind of stuff. So there's a lot going on about the retail. And yes, there's a little bit less retail. But Chris is probably the best guy to speak to this. But we own a bunch of property up north on River Street, which I think we all want to see developed one day. So with this project, what happens to, you know, how, what happens to the likelihood of retail, the quality of the project, the speed at which it gets developed, all of those things that we wrestle with? What happens to that? Is that, do we end up more likely with a better quality project faster, or are we?
I don't have any hesitation in saying, this project, if built, will add value to our property, at Larson Becker Property. No question about it. Development begets development. Vacancies beget vacancies. That's just kind of how it works, you know?
So increases the likelihood, we get a project, we get it faster, and we probably don't get asked for TIF money, or don't get asked for--
Well, we might not have to give the land away.
Right.
So that could be a positive.
Sell the land?
Right. And I wanted to get into one more point, because I like where this is going, because I do believe River Street is a tremendous opportunity to extend commercial. And this corner parcel will, at State and River, could be a real trigger for foot traffic. 5,000 square feet is a great size for a decent, nice, attractive, and destination-type restaurant. Now, some of them say, geez, we already got a lot of restaurants. But guess what? You go with your strength. We could have a restaurant district. And maybe that'll run with that success. And then maybe that begets a retail component also. So, you know, I'm not clairvoyant, but I can tell you that development will raise the value as opposed to vacancy of the adjacent properties. And that's our property.
And with this project in downtown, the likelihood that our current vacancies elsewhere in the downtown, the likelihood of them getting filled go up or down?
I believe it goes up. You're adding 195 units, and let's say they average $100,000 household income apiece. And I don't think that's too off-base. It's certainly more than 75 to 100. It's the millennial crowd.
You meant occupancy goes up, right?
What did I say?
You said vacancy goes up.
If I did, that would be wrong. But what I'm saying is, why would you not have a better space to market for lease, where there's all these consumers? You know, we're creating a play, and we just want people to come and watch it. If there's nothing to watch, in this case, if there's nowhere to buy or dine, and if there were, they're just few and far between, you're not going to get it happening before the people are there to consume the service or the good. So I do believe without question, now, Marty's point about, we're going to exacerbate the parking problem. What we have to do is be stronger at making projects park their own demand. This project more than parks its own demand. But that usually takes some two-level parking, and nobody can afford to build that at this point. They can't. But yeah, we shouldn't get ourselves back in the same spot we were, where we have a deficit. We should continue to work to bring that deficit down.
I guess my big point with all this is, the downtown as a whole is, you know, there's this project, which, if you look at it, in its, just in an isolated sense, you can come to all different kinds of conclusions, but if you look at this, if you view the downtown as an ecosystem where all the different parts work together, and changing one affects others, you know, I believe this makes for a stronger ecosystem having this project, even with a little bit less retail. It may be less retail right in that location right this instant, but it may be the catalyst, and probably will be the catalyst, that gets you more retail throughout the downtown, gets you vacancies filled, makes the whole downtown ecosystem stronger and more viable, as opposed to, you know, if we sit around and we wait, we get another project, which is a bunch of townhomes, which was proposed once, that, I think, is significantly less attractive to developing River, seeing River Street develop further north, seeing attractive, high-quality retail go across the street at the gas station, to being a driver to filling some of the vacancies downtown. So I think it would be a mistake to walk away from this.
Nick?
Sure. I would agree with a portion of that, in that this would be better than what we have now. This would be a boom for the downtown. One thing I've learned in the five years, and this process has confirmed it, is that you can justify anything. You know, the TIF, it's a couple, 2 million, it's a loan, and we can justify that, no problem. Retail, we'll make it up elsewhere, we can justify that away. The parking, I have a problem, even though the study shows somehow we put in more apartments, take away parking spots, and we get an extra surplus. That was a good one. But altogether, I still, I look at it as coming down to, you know, it's not one choice or the other, because this would still be a positive influence. If you like the new proposal, like Dave, you said it looked better, it was an improvement, you could put up with the other things and vote for it, that's great. If you don't like the changes, and I don't really like the changes, and this has nothing to do, I didn't buy into the whole argument over, you know, I didn't cut down, when the changes happened, and there was a little bashing on the developer, I didn't, Parthei wasn't happy with it, but that has nothing to do with it. Those three things seem too costly for me. But the third option is to not like those changes, but vote yes out of fear and impatience. And that's the thing I'm having problems with. The mayor has said several times over the last few weeks that everything always seems to work out in the long run, and I think the same thing here. There's going to be a long process regardless. This has to go back to the planning commission, and it's still going to be a long process. Who knows what's on the other door? I'm optimistic that there may be a better project. There might not be. But I have a hard time saying yes, just based out of fear that we're going to lose it, or impatience that we're going to, we've extended TIFs before, there's ways around that stuff, too. But those are the two reasons that I can't move forward. I'm not going to make my decision based on those two things. So I'm still a no vote, but you all have to think that aspect through. Don't just justify it because you're anxious for the new shiny building, which would still be good. There might, we've got to think long-term, and there might be something better, and more cost-effective for the city down the road.
Marty?
I just want to kind of reiterate what Elliot had said about it as being a, as a vision. And that's where I would hope you wouldn't apologize for that your, that your heart was in how you were deciding this for your town. Because this isn't our company that we're deciding with our money what to do with it. There is the intangible part, which is, does the community want this? And I go back to when you were initially bringing it up in your reservations about it. You weren't necessarily talking about the process or this or that. You had said, and it stuck with me, because I was hearing the same thing, which is giving me the pause on it. You said neighbors that have been supportive of it, that have never spoken out against things, have come up to your house and said, I'm having second reservations about it. And that part of it should make us, because to Nick's point, we can justify anything financially, if you're cutting numbers with this, that, trim this, this and that. But you can't trim the heart of it, which I don't want you to apologize for the town, because you have so much heart for the town, that it should weigh in your decision-making. Because this isn't just a random board of using our money for something. We're using their money, so it should be something that they want. And when more people that are in support of doing the large vision, to Elliot's point, to having what Lucy's saying about the downtown density, we all agree with that. We're not changing our mind about the vision. We are changing our mind, because, I'm changing my mind, because enough changes have moved it away from what I wanted, just the same as for the developer, the changes that he needs to build this. We're talking on the same thing, where he needs some changes to make this happen. And I'm saying, based on everything that we've spent, all the time and effort, thinking it through, these changes, to Nick's point, have now moved it away from where we wanted to be, and we're getting something to put something there, instead of what we want.
Dave?
Ellen?
I guess I just have a final thought on this. I mean, we started this all out because we wanted a parking garage downstairs, or downtown. By the topography and everything, we have to build and building a certain way to be able to attain that. And we want rooftops downtown. We want people downtown. To get that, to get the TIF money, to entice the developer to build a parking garage for us, and to put the rooftops downtown, we have to do this, one way or another. If they leave to get what we ask for, the parking garage and the rooftops downtown, the people downtown, somebody is going to have to build something of similar size and density, or we don't get what we want. That's really where we're at. And I think we all have to think about that. Doesn't matter if we want, if this is truly what we want downtown, rooftops and a parking garage, there aren't a whole lot of options to do that. In some form or fashion, it's going to be this building to have that kind of density and that kind of parking. There aren't, I mean, you're in construction, the developer's obviously in construction. To get that, the numbers aren't going to change, because we want them to change. The reality is, if this is what we want downtown, we're either going to vote for it now, or we're going to vote for it later, in one form or fashion. So I mean, I don't know that there's a whole lot of options for us. If that's truly what we want in that spot downtown, you know, especially with the TIF where it is, I don't know that we can extend this TIF. I don't think, because the TIF that we extended already was because of when it was originally issued, there was a state law that allowed it to be extended. You can correct me, Scott, if I'm wrong, but I don't believe you can just take any TIF and extend it because you want to.
No, you have to, it's an act of the legislature to do that.
Right. And that's what I want to make sure that was out there. And it's not like, okay, we can say, three years from now, if we have another project come up, we're going to extend it out five years so that it'll cover it and make enough money to pay it back. That's not reality. You know, I guess I just want to be the reality check that says, you know, if we want to have certain things downtown, it doesn't matter if it's a plan that you're not 100% happy with now, you're going to get a plan three years from now that you're probably not going to be 100% happy with. That's the only way you're going to get it, is by approving something of this size.
Peggy, you got something?
I do, if you don't mind. I wanted--
I wanted to talk specifically about the finances of the project. And I will just say something about extending TIFs. There's been some legislation that's already been introduced to prohibit that being extended in the future. And I think it could be very likely, especially if people like Yvonne are out there working hard to get that done. I think it's very possible that we would not be able to extend the TIF. But that aside, I've heard comments from the council that we are paying for this, we're spending the 16 million. The city will be issuing 16 million, we'll be using our bonding authority to issue the bonds. However, there will only be one taxpayer that will be paying those bonds back, and that is the developer. No other taxpayers in Batavia will be paying for this project. And the way the TIFs work is, in theory, and this is why Yvonne doesn't like it, she thinks that the developer will come and do it on his own without that incentive. In reality, I don't think that would happen. He'll tell you, no, we would not come here and build that without the TIF. So that aside, one taxpayer will be paying the bonds back and the risk to the rest of the taxpayers is that they go belly up and all of the backstops we have in place would fall apart. But we have substantial backstops and insurance policies in place to protect all of the rest of the taxpayers. In addition to the increment, we have a backup SSA, which again is paid for by the developer. And in the early years, he's pledged to make up that difference if the SSA falls short. So we have three levels of protection there to pay that debt. And out of that, we will be getting, as Aldwin O'Brien said, a parking deck. The other taxpayers will not be paying for that deck, we'll get a new deck. The downside to that is the taxpayers will have to pay to maintain it because it will be ours after it's built. Not at the end of 23 years, I just wanted to clarify that. We'll get it right away as soon as it's built. It will become the city's and the city's responsibility to maintain. The parking deck we have now is aging and not in good shape. We know, we've known for some time that we're going to have to make some further investments in parking in the downtown, not just getting this parking deck. We know in the future that we may need other parking that the city may have to pay for. So I just wanted to make it clear that the other taxpayers are not paying for this parking garage or for that 16 million. It's being paid back by the developer. And because they've made the commitment to make up the difference on the debt payments, it really becomes a pay-as-you-go TIF, not in, not in advance. Any questions on how that money works? Because I've heard in the community too, well, the taxpayers are paying this, one taxpayer is paying it. So that part of it is a really good thing for the community. And in addition, all of those apartment buildings using electricity is very good for our electric utility.
Thanks, Peggy.
Mm-hmm.
Mayor, do you have any comments?
The rest of the aldermen, I'll speak to them.
Anyone else? Lucy?
Well, I, my concern is that if we wait, there are not a lot of developers out there of this scope, these capabilities. So to be able to get a project like the one that we want, I think could be difficult. I, you know, they're not lining up at the door and they haven't since we've had this property available for sale. So I think it's a significant risk to suggest that, you know, there might be something greater on the horizon. We have economic risks, we have risk, we don't know what's going to happen to, you know, the stock market, we don't know what's going to happen to an inflation rate, there are all sorts of things that could come into play that make it a much more difficult time to build. So, and then we don't know if someone else would be interested in doing the project. And so that's a big concern to me.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one more comment unless there are questions for me. I would just say, if you put your legislative caps on and think about not putting yourself in a place where what is perfect becomes the enemy of what's really good. And I sense that is possibly behind some of the thinking in opposition, that we really wish this is what we want, this is what we absolutely have to have because it's the perfect idea. And it, maybe the last project was the perfect idea, but this developer won't build it. So again, we don't want the perfect to be the enemy of the good, and I think the good is what we still got with this proposal.
Mark?
Just really quickly, I know David offended you that you didn't think that they're the same, but from a distance, that's all that people are really looking at. So I wasn't the only one that saw those pictures on Facebook and said, huh? And so I respect what you're saying, the bell tower and the, and the triple, the way it's designed is different, but from a distance, it looks the same. I wasn't the only one that thought that, so.
Tony?
Well, I wasn't here at that time when you did, when you did this. However, I was following along and I thought this is a great, a great project and just what was needed. But as we've gone along here, you know, Elliot, you said, you know, the slope was known. I agree with you, that was known. They've, I've also heard the argument that, you know, we're in too deep. That concerns me if we're going to make a decision like that. When we're, if we're, if you're going to buy something and you're willing to pay a price for it, you come to an agreement and you find out, well, that's not available, here's a lesser product, there's usually some kind of incentive to do that. I'm seeing the incentive hasn't changed, it's still the same for us, for the city. This, you know, the retail bothers me because I really liked the mix and it's about growing, you know, you need rooftops, but you also need more retail. And we have this, the River Street is, I think, you know, that's a pride of this town, that's, I love that, and it's in the fourth ward. But if this project, when, when I wasn't here and you were talking about it, I don't think it would have passed this board as, if it were presented, if these changes were presented as the original. So I think we're being asked to accept something less when we set out for something and set our sights at something, we're willing to make commitment for something, but then we're being asked to accept something less than what we bargained for. So I have a problem with it for that.
Anyone else? Oh, well. Scott?
You know, Nick, you kind of hit home with me tonight, and I see all the reasons to get this thing done, but that scares me, just for that sake. And
I didn't mean to scare you.
You really did. It is a big decision. And I, I'm a vision guy. I, you know, I don't want to settle. And I feel like we're doing that. And I know that there's performance, I know there's, you know, return we need to make on the reality of the costs. But I'm not, for me, it's not exactly what we want. And for, and I understand, we need rooftops, I get it. I get that. And we need retail. But we're casting a vision for we want, what we want our town to look like and how we want it to grow. And yeah, that development will drive River Street. It's the economic hand grenade. But I'm struggling. I have to, I have to throw my brakes on because it's not what we wanted. And, you know, to your point, Tony, if this was what was presented at the beginning, we would have said no.
Mayor? Put you on the spot.
I detect there's a lot of doubt and I use the word, well, I use the word worry on the part of the council here as to what is the right direction to go. And so I'm trying to reflect back. I started coming to the meetings of the Batavia City Council when I was a junior in high school. And I can honestly sit here and tell you right now that that was in 1965. And I believe I have made at least 90% of every city council meeting between now, back to 1965. And obviously, for the last number of years I've been mayor, I've made almost all of them. So, you know, I've been through a lot here. And as I sat here tonight and listened to this conversation and all this doubting and projections and ideas and whatever that you all have shared, you are honorable faces on your forefathers who will come before you on this. Because I'll just use this site as a piece of history of what has happened in Batavia. This was, this property was bought in 1973 by a city council that was headed up by Mayor Robert Brown. And he was the father of one of us. And as he told me after the meeting, he says, "I think I really took a giant step tonight and I'm out in the air and I don't know where I'm falling yet." And so this was a, to probably nicely describe this, the city purchasing this property, which was 15 acres and included the depot pond area, the depot pond wasn't there yet, but it included all the water and all that area. Now, the city paid 700, I believe the number was $759,000 for over 200,000 square feet of building space and 15 acres of ground. And it was highly controversial. Lot of letters to the editor, people calling up, people objecting, that nobody knew what this was going to be, et cetera, et cetera. The city, Mayor Brown had suggested that we would move the city council and the city offices in here. And we went through all kinds of renditions, where we're going to move the fire station in here, where we're going to move the library in here, where we're going to move the police in here. At the end of the day, it took about 17 years to finally make the decision, Mayor Brown left office. And I was then the mayor in the early 1990s when the decision was made that we're going to tear about half of this down, which we did. And then we went and started to do some things. We got a referendum pass for about $2.5 million to finish off this building and put in the police station at the back. And today I sit here and listen to stories of other towns nearby us that are talking about building new police stations and the numbers I'm hearing are like 15 to 20 million dollars. So I think at the end of the day, this was really a good deal for the taxpayers of Batavia to buy this ground. Subsequent to that, in the early 1980s, after Mayor Brown made this purchase, Mr. Philip B. Elstrom, who was then chairman of the Kane County Board and who owned the building across the river where Pal Joey's now is, showed up in my office one day. I was just newly elected and he says, "We're going to have the opportunity to buy the old railroad right-ofways through downtown Batavia and I want to turn them into bike trails." So we got into that and I will tell you that that was hell, fire and damnation. You never heard so many people ranting and raving and howling and screaming, objecting to the idea that we were going to put bike trails through downtown Batavia. It was going to be the ruination of us all, there were going to be burglars and drug dealers in the backyards on all these bike trails, but most importantly, it was going to have a devastating impact on property values. So we got done with that one and some other things started to happen. We began to have some conversations about what we really wanted downtown here. And one of the ideas was, well, we need to bring some housing down here. And because we now had the bike trail and we had taken away the railroad, we were able to support through a TIF district, some developers going up on North Water Street and buying a very dilapidated factory complex of buildings and highly contaminated area, they had to bring in all kinds of soil and clean it all up. And we got, the Waterford on the Fox was the first one, followed then by the Quarry Stone. And so that was our first step in moving in. And as I sit here tonight, I was told today that, that all the units in the Quarry Stone have now been sold with maybe the exception of one. So that's now occupied. So it took a while, so there's been some time, and I guess my message here is none of this took, happened overnight, and this is the one thing I guess I will admire you all about, is having this conversation and expressing your doubts and having a debate. Because at the end of the day, the history in Batavia's been is that by doing this, good things do end up happening. When the opportunity to buy the Larson and Becker buildings came to be, that had to be moved on very quickly and you guys supported us as we went forward and bought that property over there. I would suggest that what we have over there is the proverbial diamond in the rough right now because we have that vacant land that's now sitting there, maybe it's just a temporary parking lot. And if we take the river frontage at some future date and build maybe some retail on River Street and add maybe some condos on top of it, and maybe we add some more condos down on South Shumway Avenue down there north of where this sewer plant is, those are two places people are talking about doing that. We could probably move the parking lot that's on North River Street here, right across the street to where there's, we own that property too and we could build a, still have a nice parking lot down there. But if, if this building comes together, this complex comes together, I would suggest that that will help to really bring that idea further along. And then interestingly, right north of that is the old Challenge Windmill Factory, which we've had a lot of people in here over the years eyeing that, saying, gee, I'd like to do some kind of redevelopment on this particular property. And that's sitting there with the old dam next to it. And, you know, I don't know, I'm just suggesting that all this stuff could generate other opportunities. So one thing I do want to do tonight is not encourage you to dismay yourselves or get rid of this passion or this interest in what we're doing here. Because I think at the end of the day, we've really got a good thing going for Batavia. It may take some time, but I think we really have some stuff here that at the end of the day, we'll be able to be very proud of. I will share with you, as I shut myself up here, that last month, in October, we had a reunion, and many of you know it, that's where that Christmas tree came from over there. We had three Batavia High School classes in here, 1957, 1962 and 1967. And we did a four-day reunion and they visited all these old places in Batavia that many of them had grown up in. And I am so proud of what I heard from those reunion people about, many of them came from great distances to come back for these 50-plus year reunions. And almost 201, they said, "My goodness gracious, what have you done here? This was a dump. This area down here was just old factory buildings and 55-gallon drums and beat-up buildings, the windows were coming out of them, and where's all that gone? And look at all the things that have happened here and look at all the great potentials that are still sitting here." So I guess this may be one of those seize-the-moment opportunities where we have to, you know, each of us has to reach into our souls and our conscious and decide whether or not this is a good idea or a bad idea. I guess if I had to vote on it, and I don't think I'm voting on it, because I guess I can kind of read the vote here, but I would vote for it because of the fact that I think it's just another major step forward for downtown Batavia. And as Peggy has already, I think, illustrated with her comments, 15 or 20 years from now, if this gets built, there will be some taxpayers in this town that will be very thankful that that building and its assessed valuation is sitting there and serving people because that'll be a major shot in the arm for some of the other governments in town that don't have the tax access as we do. Like we get sales tax and, you know, fees for licenses and whatever have you, and I'm not going to name the individual governments, but there's some of them that have very high tax rates and that's no secret, I'm not telling anything that anybody doesn't know. That's one of the reasons I'm very proud of the fact that even after we raise the taxes, if we pass this budget that you talked about tonight, we will still have one of the lowest municipal tax rates in the entire Chicagoland area in the city of Batavia. And with the, with the growth that's happening right now in town, I think that that'll probably keep that rate maybe even lower than what Peggy is projecting. But we didn't want to present something that was not true, but I think there's been enough housing development in this town in this past year that will, we've got some new EAV to draw upon that will keep that tax rate of the cities in a very respectable place. So from a city's perspective, this is one of those moments where, you know, are we going to seize it or are we going to sit back and wait? It's probably not a right or wrong answer, either way we go. Batavia, I think, will be a winner either way, but in the same token, you know, this is a rare opportunity where we have a developer, some people like him, some people don't. But certainly, I think in the, in the history of Kent Schodding and the city of Batavia, we've had a pretty good run with him. I mean, he built his first subdivision here and the homes that he built are still pretty good quality. good quality. And then he built Mill Creek out to the west of us, and we did a deal with him for our water plant and everything else, and he didn't hold us up, and he didn't pull any tricks on it. So, I don't have bad things to say about the guy, but I'm just, you know, I hear what you're saying, some of you have some concerns and caution, and that's good that we bring it up and talk about it. Because the true strength of what this city council's been all about in these 50-plus years that I've sat here and been at 90% or more of the meetings, is that we, we talk it out, we bring it out, we don't hide it back. And at the end of the day, the most important thing is, is when we get through voting, we've always been able to walk out of here respecting each other, understanding how everybody voted, and the next meeting, we all can sit down together and not get into little groups here and little groups there, because the person you voted with this meeting may vote against you the next meeting, but then they'll be back with you in the next vote. And I think that makes for a very solid government and one that you all can be very proud of for being a part of. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think what we'd like to do now is open it up to the public for their comments, so if you could come up and give us your name at the podium, and speak into the mic so we can all hear you. Come on up, Yvonne, and then whoever wants to come up next. And before you do start, Yvonne, I'd like to just say thanks to everybody for being patient and listening to us. I hope that, for some of you who haven't been here before, you see how the process works. And, and this is the only time that we, as the 14 of us that we're all here, are able to sit and talk with each other. We can't, we can't have a, it's a violation of a public meeting if we have more than, what is it, two or three, two or three aldermen together at one time. So this is the only time that we can all sit and talk and hear what we all have got to say. So, Yvonne?
Okay. First of all, those who don't remember the past are destined to repeat it. I was here when TIF number one was established. I have all the original documents from TIF number one that were published in the newspaper. We were told the same arguments way back then. We were told, "Build the rooftops, when we get rooftops, we'll get commercial development." Where's the commercial development? TIF number one expired. It was for 23 years, it expired, and you had to renew it because it didn't fulfill its promises. Now, you can say the economy went down the tubes, you can say whatever you want about, about the circumstances that happened in 23 years, but that's exactly the problem with spending TIF money. Because anybody knows that the first five years of any business is touch and go, regardless of what kind of business it is. And so, when you, when you go out 23 years and you say, "Oh, this is guaranteed," you know, none of these TIFs have really made money. You talk about the mall over here, yeah, we got some money off that mall for the school district. But the fact of the matter is, they turned right around and gave it back so they could extend the mall, and extended another TIF. And then we have the Huntley Mall that was out here in Huntley, that the Retail Outlet Mall, that's just like the one that we have here. And it went bankrupt. Then we have Schodin, who I don't have a whole lot of respect for, because the St. Charles Mall was a mall when we moved here. They had the Piano Factory there, and there, and there was a lot of different businesses there. He defaulted on that. He also defaulted on Tanna Farms and another property that is not made public. So I don't have any real faith in the fact that he, as a developer, is going to fulfill his promises. Also, if you go through the recent TIF stuff that I've just been cutting out of the paper this year, you'll see that he's made the same kind of arguments with St. Charles, he's had problems with Aurora, you know, he goes on, he does this stuff all the time. It is, it's modus operandi. He puts up one thing, and then he comes back and he wants something different. So, I don't, I don't have the faith in Schodin that maybe some of you do. As far as investment in this property, we've already invested a whole boatload of money. We bought property for, for higher than its market value and tore it down. We gave those guys, what have we got, about $6 million already invested? And we already have a parking garage that we built, and it's a failure of the city to maintain that property. If we're not maintaining it, how can we say we're getting a free parking garage? I mean, you know, we haven't maintained what we've gotten. As far as where we got that property to begin with, it was my understanding that 25 is a state road. And we bought the church because they were going to take the jog out of Route 25. And there was something that came about that that jog didn't come out. But now that property's vacant. How do we know the state won't come in and say, "Hey, we're going to put, we're going to take that jog out of Route 25?" You shake your heads, but, you know, it could happen.
I doubt they would not do that because it would make the intersection worse.
Well, anyway.
That's the truth, Yvonne.
Well, and you can say the municipal tax is low in Batavia, I agree. It is low. But the fact of the matter is, the school taxes are very high. And we paid to build Louise White School, we paid to build the new high school, we paid to build the middle school, we paid to build McWay, the McWayne School, and then the Wood, what is that, Wood, Hooverwood School? We've paid for all these schools. And all these TIF districts are taking school taxes away from the community. And that money has to be made up. When you bring in all these rooftops, you're going to bring in kids. And now we're looking at, we're going to have to maybe close down schools because we have people moving out. I think you really better start looking really closely at this. And then, who's paying the insurance premiums? Is Schodin paying the insurance premiums on this property? And if he's paying on it, what if he files bankruptcy? And what if, you know, what if he doesn't pay the insurance premiums? Where do we get our money? I don't trust the man, I'm sorry. You know, look at, look at, look at the legal things and see how many pages of legal filings he has.
Thank you. Anyone else?
If nothing's changed in the last two hours, I'm still Bob McQuillan, and I still live in Batavia. And actually, I didn't come here to see you guys. I, I actually thought the football team was going to be here, so I get the opportunity to speak to you. Just a couple of comments, and I'll make it as brief as possible, if my iPad works for me. I'm not up to speed on the background of the One Washington Place. And maybe I, I should be happy about that. I did read the summary for this evening's meeting, so here are my general comments. It appears that Batavia loses on all important points. Schodin gets nine more apartments. Batavia loses about 900,000 square feet in commercial space. Batavia also loses 13 parking spaces. The summary states that Kent Schodin has made it clear that he will not move ahead as approved. Quite frankly, too bad for Mr. Schodin. His company has created this problem, not you. Schodin also knew about the street slope when they first proposed the retail. Mr., oh, no, I just asked him how he pronounced it, but, Anstin, I think that's right, commented that the approved proposal was very thin on market rates. Is this the real reason why they no longer want to go with the proposal? In my opinion, Schodin was not transparent when this was originally proposed. Was their thinking, "Let's get the approval and handle the retail side of it later." I'm always concerned when expected tax revenue is not discussed. We now know that Schodin's company did not estimate the construction costs, but did someone do the analysis of what they call windfall taxes to the city? I haven't heard that dollar amount. Also, what is the difference between the potential sales tax revenue increase on the original plan versus the sales tax revenue increase under the new revised plan? Does anybody know what that dollar amount is? The memo doesn't provide Schodin's or KAM's financial reports, but I'm assuming it was shared with the council. I don't think Batavia should sell itself short. What does Batavia want to be? It's not nightlife like St. Charles or trendy retail shopping on Third Street like Geneva. Batavia has a fantastic downtown with the river, the pond, and the depot. If you want to be known for great retail and downtown residences, we first must secure a major local or national retailer. Wouldn't an Apple Store look great on East Wilson? If that happens, the rest of East Wilson retail will fill up quickly. Now you are drawing people from St. Charles and Geneva. Wouldn't that be fun? Maybe the city needs a consultant who only gets paid if he brings the right major retail, like an Apple Store, to Wilson. If East Wilson is revitalized, residents will also come. Just look at the apartments being built on Brisher Road behind the Lowes. Some retailers might find the street slope unique and funky and really like it. You have been painted a rosy picture tonight, but remember who is painting the picture. Six months from now, if Schodin doesn't get their financing, the city is left with nothing. Why not work with a developer who really wants to be part of Batavia? If you asked any varsity Batavia football player last week if good was good enough, their response would have been, "No, we demand excellence." I believe the city should also demand that same excellence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sylvia Keppel, 1420 Becker Avenue. I don't know if I want to follow that, that was really good. But I want to bring some numbers up to you. Well, first of all, this is not just a loan, this is a gift. They, like all of us, will pay property taxes, but only they will get their taxes back to pay off their building. Now, I want you to look at numbers. The $16 million is supposed to be for a public parking garage. First of all, it's woefully underparked according to city code. You made a big deal about that for the Campana Building, but you didn't even touch that for this building. There will be 194 apartments and 335 parking spaces, with a minimum of 200 reserved for tenant overnight parking. If you take the 200 reserved parking spots away, when the residents come home to park and to come home for the evening and use the restaurants in downtown Batavia, there will be 135 parking spaces left. And that's assuming that no units have one, more than one car. And for 194 units to limit them to one car, that's really pushing it. But let's assume they all have one car. Then you only have 135 parking spaces left for the public to park, and this is supposed to be a public parking garage. Currently, we have 129. We'd gain a total of six spaces for the price tag of $16 million. That's $2.67 million per space in gained parking. It's obvious that this is not a public parking garage, but a parking garage for the apartments. The apartment dwellers will, will use most of those spaces. And this is not a windfall for the school district. Retail development at the outlets mall was the windfall, retail development. The school district voted no to the TIF because they predict a burden to them in paying for the additional students without the taxes due them for 23 years. And they will still have that burden after 23 years. You argue that there would be no or few children. Did anyone notice that in the economic impact study, it was assumed that there would be children in all the two-bedroom apartments? That's hardly no or few students. More residential means more traffic. Peak traffic is residential traffic when people go to and come from work. You're going to make traffic even worse by adding more residential and taking away from the commercial that would, would travel that area during off-peak times. And you keep talking about rooftops. How many residents will this really bring to the area? If you use the economic impact study, and minus the children, because you say there will be no children, that's 350 adults in this apartment complex. Only 350. How much difference would that really make to bring in retail? Compared to over 26,000 in all of Batavia, and the Wilson Street Bridge in 2006 saw 24,000 cars a day when the city was looking at the Route 25 jog project. That's a lot of potential shoppers, far more than the 350. But retail struggles. Why? Could it be the lack of convenient parking is a part of it? And this project, especially taking away parking, will do nothing to help that. Just think, it's only 350 people, and you want to build a six-story apartment complex that I would, I would venture to say that most Batavians don't want to see there for 350 people. And Schodin doesn't really want commercial. He never did. He strung you along. He told St. Charles he didn't want to build commercial. He told the Calb. He lied to you to get you to bite because that's what you wanted. That is what he always wanted. And he wants you to bend to his will instead of putting, putting together your vision for Batavia, a vision that all Batavians can share and support. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the gentleman on the end there's been patiently waiting. Anybody else?
So my name is Aaron Kilbert, and I've been a resident of Batavia for 14 years. And first of all, I want to thank the council for all the thought and discussion tonight. And I've been sitting here for the last several hours, and really, two things have come up as far as One West Washington seems to be driving the decision. One is that the construction of this building will drive growth in our downtown. And I hear a lot about rooftops in the downtown, and I've been a resident of the Fox Valley for 30 years, and I've seen our neighbors to the north in Geneva and St. Charles, their downtowns have grown significantly during my lifetime in this area. And one thing I would, is it Mr., how do you pronounce your name?
Aiston.
Aiston. Those communities have seen growth in their downtowns. I don't, I mean, you can correct me, but was the driver population density near the downtown? Or can the council give me an example of where construction of a unit like this to move population density closer to the downtown was successful in creating a revitalized downtown?
Which question, because I have a need for...
Perhaps I can answer that question. Geneva has a longstanding commercial district. What drives occupancy in the Geneva buildings is the commercial district itself. If you want to be a successful retailer, you want to be where other retailers are. You want to access and take advantage of existing foot traffic. It's difficult to suddenly create massive retail on its own. All right, I could answer that question. Adding more parking always helps. I'll give an example in Geneva. The city used to have a parking standard where if you changed your use, you had to provide the parking. Well, most buildings in Geneva sit on an individual parcel without any private property to park. So what you had was retailers wanting to get out, and the landlord wanted to occupy the building with a restaurant. But instead of providing the parking for the restaurant, which is, parks at a high greater ratio than a... ratio than a retailer, they said, "Well, if you don't do that, you can pass for space. It's going to cost you $9,500 a space for every space you don't have." When they lifted that requirement, suddenly you saw restaurants. So it's a lot to do with foot traffic. It's lots to do with parking. But in the case of Geneva at any rate, it had to do with the mass of retail that was there, which is why more retail shows up, which is why Shodin built the projects along the river and the Dotson place in Southern Third Street. I mean, it's comparing apples and apples historically. So, no, to answer your question, it wasn't additional rooftops that drove the commercial in Geneva. It was the longstanding commercial. That goes back to when the county seat's been there, when the old courthouse was there. You know, the activity that was daytime population just by officeing. So I think -- I hope that answers your question anyways.
Yes, thank you. So the question I would propose to the council is, I mean, I have a young family. I have an 11, an 8, and a 5-year-old. I coach youth themes. I want to support my hometown. But in order for our downtown to thrive, first of all, we have to attract Batavia residents. And I can tell you that I live in the Sixth Ward about a half mile from downtown. And getting across town, we are limited by the bridge. It's very, very difficult to get across Batavia or even get to the downtown during peak times. And so when it's nice, we will walk down. We'll go to the farmer's market. We try to support every event. But in the colder months, we'll go to Geneva, we'll go to St. Charles because there's no parking. You know, I'm -- my student, my kids go to JB Nelson. We'll have an event at Pal Joey's. It's not a ton of people going. We have to park blocks and blocks away sometimes. So I think I appreciate what you're trying to do, but in order for downtown to thrive, you have to get Batavia residents to frequent the downtown. And we have to get our neighbors to the north, south, east, and west to come here. I guarantee you, when you go to Geneva or St. Charles on a Friday or Saturday night, if you polled the people there, it's a mix of people from all over the Fox Valley, not just people that live in the town. And when I talk to my friends, I have friends in St. Charles, Geneva, Wheaton, Batavia, the reason why they don't come is, "Where would I park?" They don't even know where half these restaurants are because there's nowhere to park. In St. Charles and Geneva, there's parking lots everywhere strategically. So that's one point. The other thing I'm hearing from the council members that have spoken up is you've kind of put a stake in the ground. Some of you are committed to this project, and then the variables changed, and now we're kind of hanging out there. And it's out there, and every time someone drives down Wilson, they see, "Oh, what's going to happen? What's going to happen?" And I've learned over time that the right thing is usually not the easy thing. And I think the easy thing would be to go forward with this because you've already kind of stuck your necks out there. And I believe in Batavia, and with all respect to the representative, Mr. Shodin, I think we would find other builders that would want to partner with our city and create, help create the vision that you all want. So on behalf of my family, I would hope that you would vote no on moving forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carl Dinwiddie, 1156 Pine Street. I love these meetings. I love our smart council members. I love to hear the citizens. We have such great citizens in Batavia. I've told the mayor many times, I've lived on the west coast, east coast, south to north, been around the world twice. And I've talked to thousands of people in Batavia, and you will, I don't know where you're going to find any better residents than we have right here. And that's one of our big, big selling points and qualities. I mentioned, I've written things before, but I always throw them away, and I end up with a bunch of notes. And that's why I mentioned I really appreciate being able to come speak after all the discussions. And I've heard some of the variables, so I can kind of refine what my thoughts are. Rule one in the secrets of power negotiations are never, never make decisions based on time constraints. Have walkaway power is rule two, and always look for the nibbles along the way of the deal. And I think we've seen about a year long of nibbles from this developer. I've mentioned to Mr. Aiston in some of his presentations a couple of times that they're very, I almost have to say wordy, but there's a lot of rosy scenarios and wags whenever he's asked questions. There's not really a lot of hard stuff in there. And then I'd mention about the mayor, and I appreciate his speeches, but I'm not thrilled with his leap of faith economics. As a graduate economist, we would never make a decision based on a leap of faith. Mike's one-cent tax would raise $200,000. One of Mr. Aiston's numbers was new residents would increase tax dollars of $28,000 by shopping in Batavia. Well, that's jump change compared to a one-cent fuel tax. That's not a deal breaker. And I think Peggy, I love her numbers, and I know she's a lot smarter than me at numbers, but Batavia Apartments, which is about twice, it's two big apartment buildings, twice the units, and their taxes are about $580,000 a year. And the last estimate I heard, I think it was developed by Mr. Aiston, was that after this is built out, we could look for a valuation that would generate about $600,000 a year in tax revenue. Well, at $15 million plus about eight for interest, we're not going to even get close to paying off that $23 million, although Peggy has different numbers. Ms. Mellon is leaving the Fed. We don't know what the interest rates are going to be after she leaves. Why do people move to Batavia? The schools and the quality of this community and its residents. I can see potential buyers for some of the $10,000 residents driving through town and saying, "This town isn't quaint. Look at that monstrosity downtown. It destroys the charm of the city, and it blocks the view of all our amenities downtown." And then piggybacking on what the mayor said about the people coming back for reunions, I don't know if they're going to have smiles on their faces when they see a monstrosity on the corner of their beautiful city. Okay, back to rosy scenarios about the windfall money. I think only about one out of 10 TIFs has been successful. And I have here on my little phone from the Geneva Patch, and it's about Mr. Shodin. And I'll just let everybody look it up, but it's not very complimentary in a lot of areas, so I won't go into that. But it does say, "Through the magic of TIFs or Tax Increment Financing District, sales tax revenue is rerouted from essential city services to a specific development plan in the hopes that down the road, revenue will be more, will more than offset the initial loss. While the Murray work well on paper, more often than not are used as rewards for," now remember, this is from Geneva, "for the mayor's favorite donors, and far more often than not, these projects never live up to the gilded lily billing, which ends up costing the taxpayers even more." And that was when I first spoke about California. That's what they found. There was a lot of, they were just rewarding, doing favoritism to developers and friends who made contributions and things like that, so they did away with them. And I guess my last point, because nobody has mentioned that we've kind of ignored the, not kind of, we have ignored the planning commission's recommendations and overridden them, and we've, I'm hearing a different tone today, but he did write, "For a while, we were ignoring the overwhelming public testimony of the public against this project." So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Patzl, do you, Yvonne, you have something else?
Just one more thing.
Please use the mic.
Yvonne Dinwiddie, again. When we first moved here, you know, you talk about bringing in rooftops, bringing in commercial. When we first moved here, this whole downtown was thriving. We had a Jewel where the old Walgreens was. We had a hardware store across the street. We had Johnson's Drugs. We had Rachel's Drugs. We had the other drugs up on the, up on the other end. And we had flower shops and barber shops and all kinds of things. Do you know what we didn't have? We didn't have parking. You couldn't get a parking place down here. And so all our, all our businesses moved out to Randall Road. Kind of puts a damper in your scenario, I think.
Mr. Patzl, do you have other comments you'd like to make?
Just for the record, I'd like to correct a couple of statements that were made there. There was a statement made that Shodin defaulted on the St. Charles Mall property. That is an inaccurate statement. If I could share with you that the St. Charles Mall, which I believe the property that's being referred to is generally located at Randall Road and Route 38. That property was a farm field. It was purchased by, the farm was purchased by the Shodin organization, who was developed into a mall. The mall was leased up, including Speed's Department Store, Kmart Department Store, many inline stalls with stores within the mall and the Jewel Food Store. It was then, at some point in time after fully leased, it was then sold. I think it was changed hands two or three times. It was eventually sold to an insurance holder, and that's when the stores, the qualities of the stores began to decline. The mall actually went, what we call went dark. Shodin came back and purchased the mall after it went dark, and we currently own that property, and we have demolished all of those buildings. So Shodin did not default on that property. There's also an accusation or comment made that Shodin defaulted on a property commonly known as Tanna Farms. Tanna Farms was part of the Mill Creek Development. We did not default on it. Tanna Farms is currently many Shodin single-family homes as well as a elementary, elementary school for the Geneva School District. So just wanted to clear the record. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Peggy, it looks like you have something more you want to add.
I just wanted to clarify what Carl had mentioned as far as the property tax increment. He is, he is correct in that the increment will be low in the beginning of the project. The payback was a total of the net present value of all the increment over the 23 years with very minor increases in the EAV and rate. And the good thing about this particular RDA that we have right now is that the developer has agreed to pay the difference upfront for the shortfall in the beginning of the project. I don't know that you would find another developer that would be willing or able to do that. So that is the reason, and you are correct.
Anybody else on the council? Any final comments, thoughts? Okay, Chris, put you back up here on the hot seat. I'm thinking that you're expecting to try to get some direction here so the developer knows which way we're thinking, so he can make some definitive decisions on which way he's planning on going.
Yes, I would ask, I would ask that the committee of the whole take a vote on whether to direct, to direct the developer and the staff to work together to bring the project to fruition pursuant to the revised plans, or conversely, vote against it, in which case that will end the developer's, I guess, time and effort and resources towards this project. And staff would then, we'd huddle up, and presumably, we would re-up on our request for qualifications and try to generate interest in redeveloping the property again.
Okay, so since it isn't a binding vote here, we don't have anything here to vote on other than knowledge for the developer. We don't need a motion or a second on it. We'll just do a roll call.
And what are you doing?
We're doing a roll call to direct staff to work with the developer to continue the development process of the redesigned drawing of the One North West Washington Plaza development. Anybody have any other comments?
I just have a question. I mean, this is non-binding.
Yep.
So if this is, we vote approval, it doesn't mean it's going to go forward. And if we vote against it tonight, doesn't mean it's done deal.
That, I would, I would agree. Yes, you're right. If we vote to approve this tonight, it still has to go through Plan Commission, and it still have to, goes back all through the public hearings and all the, all the public meetings, and then it has to go back through the committee of the whole, and then it has to go back to the city council. Correct? I mean, why?
I didn't mean to cut you off there, Mr. Chairman, but I guess we believe that, or our request was that as the committee of the whole, you have before you items that you had requested. One was a, an amended redevelopment agreement. One was the results of the financial study, and another was the results of the parking study. We, we, the developer, along with staff, have provided you with those documents, and we were expecting a vote to move those forward to the city council or not to move those forward and kill the project. So in essence, you're voting on the amendment, the RDA, the amendment to the RDA, which contains the financial data and the revisions of the number of units, number of parking spaces, et cetera, that are contained within that plan.
Okay.
That would then would advance to the city council for formal vote, and if there's more discussion on each red line comment within the RDA, there may be more discussion at that point.
Okay, so our city administrator agrees with that.
Yes, I agree with that. And I'd also like to articulate that up to this point, although the redevelopment agreement had a provision in that if the project did not move forward, that under certain circumstances that the city would owe the developer for the costs that they had incurred on the development of the project up to that date. Both Dave and Kent expressed to us that up to this point, that they had no intention of enforcing that provision of the agreement. But we're crossing an important line at this juncture, and that is the creation of the construction plans, and which results in a significant investment. And I think that's another reason why the developer would like a more definitive approval of this project at this time, and that that approval would be demonstrated by recommending approval of the changes to the redevelopment agreement, so that there's some certainty there. Now, that certainly does not guarantee that there's going to be approval at any of those other levels in the process, that it may not get approval of the Plan Commission or the Historic Preservation Commission, or at, you know, it also then has to go back and receive the approval for the building permit. So there are a number of processes that this still must go through, but they need to go through those eventually with full construction plans, and that's a significant future investment.
I concur.
Okay, so I guess we do need a motion then. Yeah, I'm looking for it because I think I remember seeing it in Chris's memo here.
I don't think there is one.
There wasn't one, okay.
There wasn't one.
All right, so we do need a motion then to recommend the city council the acceptance of the revised RDA for One North Washington in compliance with the redesign of the plan itself?
Yeah, the RDA will, just like the original one, have an exhibit that will include the plans that are the reconfigured plans.
Okay, so I'll make that motion. Second. Second by who?
McKenna.
Roll call, please.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callie?
No.
Saron?
No.
McFadden?
Aye.
Resato?
No.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark absent. Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
and Salvati?
No.
Six As, seven As.
So that's got a vote of seven noes and six yeses. So I would suspect at this point in time then, it's up to the developer, which direction he wishes to go, right?
I think we're done.
I'm done.
I think the only thing that may change the scenario is recognizing that Alderman Stark is not present. Perhaps one of the voting successful voters, in this case, the people that voted no, one of them will be willing to bring it back for another vote. I'm not suggesting that's going to happen. I'm just saying, I think technically that can happen, and perhaps the full 14 members of the council could vote.
Well, I was going to say, the motion was made to send it to the City Council with the recommendation.
With the negative recommendation.
So if it goes to the City Council, and Alderman Stark is there, and somebody changes their vote, or the mayor has to vote, the vote could come out differently.
Yeah, I understand. So in other words, the council still could vote on it with the current vote in place. Right, thank you.
We just made a recommendation to ourselves.
Yep. Okay. So we're going to move on then to project status, item 16.
Okay, a few projects to update you on tonight. There's an interesting project next week. The owner of a property that is located at McKee and Wenmuth has scheduled, they own the property, but it's going to be a tear-down. And what they did was, they contacted the Batavia Fire Department and offered that property up so that Batavia Fire Department could use that for training prior to the building being taken down. And while we don't always report on those things, I just wanted to bring it up in case people are watching, and just inform people that people might not have considered that as a possibility for use. And it's really important to our Batavia Fire Department to be able to have opportunities like that, to do training in actual buildings. We did the same thing on the properties that are on the redevelopment site for the former One Washington Place project. The burn at, also, we had a burn today at the basin at the Public Works Building, just to maintain that, to keep down the weeds that are there. Also, this week, the Public Works Department is continuing to do one last citywide leaf pickup. And the Communications Department hosted Civics Plus training today for kind of a train-the-trainer session, and I understand that it was a four-hours of training, and all the participants felt like they really got a lot out of it and learned a lot more about the capabilities and the limitations of that software. And that's really important because in the coming year, in 2018, toward the end of the year, it's scheduled for a full redevelopment of our website. And so it's important that, you know, we have an idea of what those capabilities are. Tomorrow, the electric vehicle charging station will be installed in the parking lot that's located at the, to the west of this building. We hope that those residents who have electric vehicles and people who are visiting our area and have that app to tell them where electric vehicle charging stations will be able to avail themselves of this new amenity in our downtown. But I also want to keep in sight that the electric vehicle charging stations themselves are not something that we're looking at as a huge potential moneymaker for the city, but rather, not only is it demonstration to our environmental goals that we have for our city, but also as electric vehicles, more of our residents become owners of electric vehicles, and they install charging stations within their homes, on average, that will realize a 20% greater usage of electricity in their homes. So our residents owning electric vehicles will have a good upside for us as well. This week, we're also going to be meeting with the Batavia Park District just to check where we are at in our collaboration on the project of looking at the future of the Batavia Dam. And then next week, on the agenda for the Committee of the Whole, is an initial land use plan for the project known as the Villas of White Oaks. That's located south on Redan, adjacent to the Marmion Academy down there. So that's just some projects that I wanted to fill you in on.
What is that one? Next Tuesday?
That one's next Tuesday. Yeah, December 5th. And does anybody have any questions for me? Okay, thank you very much.
No questions? Okay, thanks. Item 17, others. Anybody have another? Who others?
I move we adjourn.
That's it. Motion by O'Brien, second by Salvati, all in favor.
Aye.
Adjourn.
That was right out there.